April 6, 2021, closed session of the City of Fullerton City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the explanation on the way that we're conducting meetings?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. In March 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency due to COVID issues and issued executive orders N 2920 and N 2915, I believe. Sorry, the number is not written here, which allow a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible virtually to all council members and the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body. Members of the public can access meetings streamed live online at https://fullerton.legistar.com on Spectrum Cable 3 and ATT U verse Channel 29. Are we not getting sound? If you'll pause me for one second, we're gonna... What's the other option? Apologize for the delay. We're getting the sound out to the Zoom meeting, which we're about to tell you all about. Yeah, it's registering input. Okay. The joy of Zoom. We are back. So you can access the meeting on fullerton.legistar.com on Spectrum Cable 3 and ATT U verse Channel 99. Council chamber will have limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis. I would like to add that we've added an additional 12 seats to tonight's meeting due to the lowered restrictions and moving to whatever color tier means we can let more people into the building. So we do have a few more seats available tonight. They're still socially distancing. We do ask that people still wear masks and observe social distancing protocols while you're here. The public may make oral comments via computer, smart device, or telephone. Please note that attendee names and/or phone numbers will display in the Zoom meeting. Those wishing to speak via telephone may call 1-669-900-9128 and enter Zoom meeting ID 942-6743-6591 and then press the pound sign. When prompted to enter a participation ID, press pound sign again. If you are participating via telephone and like to make a comment, enter star 9 when the mayor calls for comment on the item. Those wishing to speak on an item via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature on your computer and a staff member will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and you'll have three minutes to speak on the item. Please remember to state your name for the record. Members of the public, as always, may only speak one time during public comments on each agenda item regardless of what media you're using to communicate. And those wishing to address city council in person must register to speak on the item at the front counter in the city manager's office, and please be sure you register in plenty of time to call your name. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and I'll just give you a moment to relax after that. And then would you please call the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, we have an additional item to the closed session.
Yes, in the case of Christopher Wren versus the City of Fullerton, this matter has come as the posting of the agenda and cannot wait till the next regular council meeting. We're asking for the council to agendize this evening so we can discuss in closed session this pending litigation matter. Let me also indicate that with respect to the agenda where it says on item two, anticipated litigation, that should have said initiation of litigation. We'll be considering the potential initiation of litigation. It takes a four-fifths vote to add this item to the agenda.
Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call roll on this? Oh.
I'm so moved to include item four.
Second.
And Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
At this point, we would receive public comments prior to the closed session, and that would be limited to closed-session items.
And do we have any Zoom comments on this item? I believe he's checking. I believe we have no Zoom comments on this item.
And seeing no persons in... No attendees in person, we will now recess to closed session to discuss closed-session items, including now the additions: initiation of litigation and also conference with labor negotiator with agency representatives, Kenneth A. Domer and Eddie Manfro. And with that, we shall recess to closed session. I call the April 6, 2021, meeting of the Fullerton City Council the regular session to order. And I would ask the city clerk to convey to the public means of how this meeting is to be conducted and how you may participate. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. In March 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency of COVID-19 and issued executive orders which allow a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible virtually to all council members and the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body. Members of the public can access meetings streamed live online at fullerton.legistar.com on Spectrum Cable, Channel 3, and ATT U verse Channel 99. The council chamber will have limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis for members of the public to attend the meeting in person. All persons visiting city facilities shall wear face masks and observe social distancing protocols. The public may make oral public comments via computer, smart device, or telephone. Please note that attendee names and/or your phone number may display during the meeting. Those wishing to speak via telephone can call 1-669-900-9128, and all this information is also on the agenda posted on our website. And enter Zoom meeting ID 971-6608-7920, then press the pound sign. When prompted to enter a participation ID number, press the pound sign again. If you're participating via telephone and would like to make a comment, enter star 9 when the mayor calls for comment on that item. If you wish to speak on an item via the Zoom app, please utilize the raise hand feature on your computer, smartphone, or tablet. A staff member will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak on the item. Please remember to state your name and city of residence for the record. And as always, members of the public may speak only one time during public comments and on each agenda item regardless of the medium they address the city council. And those wishing to address council in person must register to speak on each item at the front counter, and be sure to register in plenty of time for staff to call your name to come speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. And with that, I would request that you call the roll, please.
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
I would like to ask everyone to please stand, and we will do the invocation. In this Easter season and with the reopening of our economy and with the springtime, I believe it's important that we pay heed to some of these words of wisdom. Keep us, O Lord, from pettiness. Let us be large in thought, in word, in deed. Let us be done with fault-finding and leave off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face to face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always be generous. Grant that we may realize that it is the little things that create differences, that in the big things of life we are at one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great common human heart of us all. And, O Lord God, let us not forget to be kind. Amen. I'd like to ask our Chief of Police, Robert Dunn, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chief. Mr. City Attorney, is there any report from closed session?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thanks. And my apologies to those attending for the late start due to closed session. I would ask now the council whether they have ex parte communications to report. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have three presentations this evening. I will handle two of those. I've asked Councilmember Zara to also help with one of those presentations. The first of which is DMV Donate Life Month. I don't know if we have someone here to receive this proclamation on behalf. Oh, thank you. The council will make this presentation of the proclamation, but would you please let us know?
Thank you, Mayor Whitaker and members of the city council. My name's Rita Jackson, and I'm an ambassador for One Legacy. But more importantly, I'm Jasmine's mom. Jasmine actually became registered to be a donor when she turned 17 and got her driver's license. She was so excited to be a registered donor. She said, "Mom, something happens to me, guess what? I might actually be able to help somebody." It was only three years later that my daughter actually passed away suddenly. She was 20 years old. We received a phone call only 12 hours after she had passed from One Legacy, and they let us know that Jasmine was actually a candidate for tissue donation. It was through that tissue donation that Jasmine has helped over 30 people. One in particular I want to tell you about is there was an 18-year-old girl who sent me a letter, and she said that she waited until then because she had received Jasmine's tissues since she tore her ACL in track. It turned out that after having surgery and extensive rehabilitation, she was back on the track, and she was actually able to get a scholarship for college. It's things like that that remind me that we have ways of helping people even when our life is over, we're ending. Because of this, I'm so grateful that your city has decided to proclaim this Donate Life Month. And I have to say thank you, Mayor Whitaker and Councilmember Silva, for always trying to attend our Donate Life Run Walk in April, which usually is held the last Saturday in April at Cal State Fullerton. But of course, last year we did it virtually, and again, we're doing it virtually this year. So please feel free to still register and join us. Anyone who's interested in walking, they can just go online, and they can post it to Facebook. We can post it on our social medias. If everyone was to register, we could eliminate the hundreds of thousands that are waiting for that life-saving organ. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for that, and I don't want to miss that 5K, no matter what.
There you go.
Such a sad story there, and we share in your grief.
Thank you.
A part of the proclamation points out, whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas more than 108,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. And we have many other whereas here which provide a lot of information involving this important cause. Allow me just to come down briefly and present this to you.
And if you don't mind, back here, we'll see if we can get somebody to come.
One, two, three. I'm gonna step a little closer for a second one. One, two, three.
We have photographs evidence of not distancing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilmember Zara, would you mind leading the discussion on the next proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As an Arab-American, I'm honored to present this proclamation, Arab-American Heritage Month. April seems to be a month of celebration, and it is one that we celebrate Arab-American heritage, and I'm honored to present it to Mr. Iad Afalka of the Arab-American Civic Council that have done quite a lot of work in our communities here, so honored. I will read this, and I'll come back down to you. But I would like to read this because I think there's some really interesting information here that I think would help shed some light on Arab-Americans. Whereas in the period of mass migration between 1800 and 1924, over 20 million immigrants came to the United States of America, with approximately 95,000 of them from the Greater Syria region known as today as Syria, Lebanon, Jordan, and Palestine. Whereas historically, California has been a popular destination for immigrants from the Middle East, creating strong cultural fusions between the two regions. Currently, there are over 715,000 persons of Arab heritage living in California, making it the state with the largest number of Arab-Americans. Large communities of Arab-American backgrounds reside in areas like Los Angeles, Orange County, San Diego, and San Francisco. Whereas the first Arab-American immigrants who came to the United States, specifically New York, Michigan, and California, have brought along with them rich history and traditions that have fused beautifully with the American culture. Whereas Arab-Americans have made valuable contributions to a variety of Arab-American life, including medicine, education, sciences, business, and culture. Arab-Americans occupy positions of leadership and responsibility throughout our system of government, setting fine examples of public service at the local, state, and national levels. Whereas among the great Arab-Americans who have contributed significantly to this country are Candace Leitner, founder of Mothers Against Drunk Driving, Sam Moore, founder and president of Thomas Nielsen Publishers, the largest worldwide distributor of the Bible, Hala Ghurani, CNN correspondent, Jibran Khalil Jibran, one of my favorite poets, American poet, Joseph Aboud, menswear fashion designer, Donna Shalala, U.S. Secretary of Health and Human Services that served from 1993 till 2001, and Edward Mosry, lawyer who worked alongside Erin Brockovich on the water contamination case of Hinckley, California. Whereas Arab-Americans have truly made valuable and substantial contributions to every facet of California life, including the entertainment industry, the most valuable and the most notable of whom are Casey Kasem, Salma Hayek, Aliya Shaukat, and Mustafa Akkad. And I'm honored to have known Mustafa Akkad and his family, and they were just a great inspiration. If anybody doesn't know, Mustafa Akkad started the franchise of a little independent movie called Halloween. Now therefore be it resolved that I, that Mayor Bruce Whitaker, Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the entire Fulton City Council, do hereby join Arab-American Civic Council in proclaiming April 2021 as Arab-American Heritage Month in the City of Fulton.
Thank you. We're happy to hear from you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We are humbled and honored that the Arab-American community has been recognized in our great state of California. I wasn't prepared to speak, but as Mayor Whitaker, he reminded us about the small little things in life. I don't think anybody here does not like ice cream. So I'm gonna tell you a small story about the contribution of a Syrian immigrant at the trade fair in Chicago at the turn of the century. It was a sunny day in the summer, and there was an Italian immigrant who was selling gelato, which is the ice cream. Start melting, there's no more cubes. He gonna lose the ice cream, and people are gonna lose their joy. So he was selling a smaller sweet, which is like pancakes. We call it kataif, next to ham. With a big smile, without even speaking Italian nor English, he started gesturing for ham. He made the pancake, the kataif, into a cone and handed to his Italian friends, which is the universal language of understanding of food and music. So he grabbed that cone and put ice cream. And since then, he brought so much joy to every single little kid and big kid inside of us. The other one is very simple. If it wasn't for a son of Syrian immigrant as well, which is Steve Jobs, we wouldn't have our iPhones today. So we are very grateful for the country that adopted our people, and we are very grateful that we returned that hospitality with the great contributions when we wanted to make sure that we are an asset, not a liability. So from the bottom of our hearts, on behalf of the Board of the Arab-American Civic Council, I would thank the City of Fullerton, represented its mayor, Bruce Whitaker, Councilmember Amazara, Councilmember Nick Donlev, Councilmember Fred Jung, and Councilmember Hasus Silva, and the staff, and the chief police, and everyone who make this city welcoming to everyone. Thank you, and God bless you.
One, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three.
Two of my very favorite cuisines, Italian and Middle Eastern, so we should have helped.
Well, thanks for saying the little things. So that's what kept in my mind. I think everybody loved the ice cream.
Thanks for being with us this evening. One more proclamation this evening. That's a little bit more than we generally have, but I'm always pleased because we don't have a divided vote on this. And this one is a favorite of mine as well, as far as the recognition of this and the observance that we have in Fullerton. Arbor Day. This is a city proclamation talking about Arbor Day and the importance to this city, April 21 of 2021. Whereas in 1872, the state of Nebraska set aside a special day for the planting of trees, and it is estimated more than 1 million trees were planted on that first Arbor Day. And whereas this holiday is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees contribute to our environment in countless ways, including reducing erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting of heating and cooling costs, improving air quality, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify the community, as well as provide a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Fullerton held its first Arbor Day in 1971 and was one of the first cities in Orange County to receive a Tree City USA designation by the National Arbor Day Foundation, in celebration of its 40th anniversary, Fullerton strives to continue expanding and protecting its urban forest of over 34,000 street trees. And whereas the City of Fullerton will celebrate this Arbor Day by planting 10 trees at California State University Fullerton campus and virtually engaging the community. Therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce Whitaker, Mayor of the City of Fullerton, on behalf of the entire Fullerton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 21 of 2021 as Arbor Day in the City of Fullerton, and urge all Fullerton citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands on Arbor Day and throughout the upcoming Earth Week. And I don't know how many people here have participated in the plantings, but it's always a great event. And if you're able to join us at CSUF, we look forward to that. You were looking as though you had something to add, Councilmember Jung?
Oh, no.
Okay, okay. Well, anyway, that is the end of our proclamations. I didn't know if there was anyone here to receive this or not, but seeing none. We will move on now to public comments, and we are interested in hearing from the public on items that are not contained within this agenda. So those wishing to speak, if you will please make that known to our city clerk, we would be happy to hear from you at the podium. You have up to three minutes, and please practice good decorum and address all your comments to the council. And with that, Madam Clerk, do we have requests to speak?
We have 20 people in the system, so if whoever's closest to the microphone, I see people working their way over there, we'll go ahead and start, and the rest can line up along the wall by the microphone. But please observe social distancing and keep your masks on, at least while you're not talking.
Good evening.
Hi. There are two...
Pardon, a little closer to the microphone, if you can.
There are two amendments to the Constitution. There are two amendments to the Constitution that have to do with parking vehicles as living quarters, and that's in 2014 and 2018. And the amendments were the fourth and the eighth. And they have, they had no problem canceling the laws because of that. Also, in Fullerton, you have the Union Pacific Park right between Acacia and, not Acacia, Walnut and Treslo that has parking spaces, 36 mock spaces. And you could put 18 motorhomes or 10 motorhomes and some cars, whatever. That would give us a place to stay until this gets over. But sending notices on Saturday that we're gonna be towed and ticketed on Monday, it doesn't help, and nothing's going right. And these amendments, they're good for us, and I don't see why we're having to force this. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is James, and I'm also here to address the situation over on Walnut. I live in an RV, and I've been living there for over a year with my dogs. I live in an RV, and I've been living there for over a year with my dogs. I'm a recovered alcoholic, and I've been down on my luck. I had a stroke four years ago, and moving into an RV was the cheapest thing that I could do. And I can keep my area clean, and I know that they're trying to, they're constantly trying to get us to move from the street. And the biggest problem is the harassment, as she said, to be given notice on a Saturday, the day before Easter, to say to you, you may be towed on Monday or ticketed. You know, that's just, that's feared tactics, and it's ridiculous, and it happens over and over again. And we really have nowhere else to go. This is it. This is the last place on the block for us. You know, we made a, we made a home there, and I just hope that there is a safe place I can stay. You know, I have enough on my plate. You know, I'm trying to, I have a case with disability that I'm trying to get to the end of, and hopefully that'll work out, and I can get things back on my feet. But I'm here in Fullerton because I've lived in Fullerton for over 10 years in my life, and not this time, but this time I've been here for two years. And I consider it a safe place to be, and especially over there, I consider it to be a safe place to be with the lighting and whatnot. And I just, I hope, I hope that we can be heard. I know there's some people that make it a real hassle because they make a huge mess, and then they tend to just leave, and they leave it for everybody. But the fact is, the city can come clean now and again. You know, I pack out everything that I pack in, and that's what most of us should do. There's us people that have been there consistently for over a year. We've had no problems in keeping our areas clean. It's just the newer people in the front who've moved over from the Valencia area that they were being pushed out of because they had made such a mess over there. So I feel, I feel that the people who are doing the mischief are the ones that should be approached, and not the people that are really just trying to survive. I don't need to go to a shelter. I have a home, and I have two dogs to care for, and I love them very much. I don't want to lose them. So I just, I just pray that you guys will look at this situation and realize that we're really people, and we're suffering, and, you know, we're doing our best too. And thank you for your time, all of you.
Thanks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Tonight, I'm speaking very frightened because I am asking and putting out the word that I need help, and the building that I live in is shutting down their elevator for two weeks. There is no other way to, for the handicapped and disabled to leave the building. We would be incarcerated. My scary thing is the fact that in the notice, they said approximately two weeks. Well, that word approximately scares me to death because that tells me that there is no penalty clause or performance bond in the contract, and they could take as long as they want to finish the project. My doctor's office took eight months. So, and as I say, I speak from experience, and I'm asking if there's anybody that can help. I'm trying to do as much front work as I can for my landlord and my property manager to find another place to stay. And I just, my landlord lives in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and I want, I don't want to hurt them, and I want to give them the option of several places that I might be able to stay and other people in the building, because there are quite a few of us that are disabled. So if there's anyone out there that knows of anyone that might be able to help, I have no access to the internet, so I have no way of finding places to live on my own. I know there's short-term rentals, but I don't know who to contact. So if there's anyone out there that can help me, I sure would appreciate it. And if there's anyone that knows a contract attorney that would mind helping broken down old Broad and her landlord to find out if there is a penalty clause and a performance bond in the contract, so we have an idea of how long it could, you know, if there's, it can take forever, or a little, they say approximately two weeks, and that's the word that scares me. As you can tell, I'm kind of shook right now. So if there's anybody that can help, please pass the word, and if you can call the council office, they'll be happy to give you my telephone number. As I say, I have no internet or email. So thank you so very much. I appreciate your time, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed because I do not want to be incarcerated. My male stability wouldn't take it, believe me, because I'm very, very scared. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Coach Jean Weaver. I'm a Class A LPGA golf professional, nominated 2020 LPGA Teacher of the Year by my peers. I played golf for Cal State Fullerton after attending Rosary Academy in Fullerton, where I'm currently the head golf coach. Truly, the last place I wanted to be is right here right now. Last year, when I asked Mayor Fitzgerald for help to reopen the services at Fullerton Golf Course, she responded quickly. There were also many safety concerns, and they've only worsened. In January 2021, the general manager at Fullerton Golf Course and his supervisor, Joyce Shelton, made certain decisions with regard to public safety, and I spoke up about those decisions too. Mr. Wong immediately returned to work at Fullerton Golf Course after his six-year-old son was diagnosed with the coronavirus. Mr. Wong said he was quarantining in place in the workplace. I went to his supervisor to express the grave concern we all had over the judgment of American golf. Her pro shop, Sidaaf, was grateful I spoke up. There were three other cases of golf course members, staff members, who tested positive, but no one was notified, not other staff members or contractors. After writing these concerns in an email to Ms. Shelton, she responded about the fluidity of the situation. However, instructions and protocol were not fluid instructions. They were instructions. Now, six months after returning to work, American Golf has issued a 30-day notice to terminate my contract. This is because I refused to sign a new contract, disallowing the group lessons held at Fullerton Golf Course. The new contract also raises the students' cost for a lesson by 37 and 1/2%. I don't teach at Monarch Beach. I teach at Fullerton Golf Course, which caters to the blue collar worker. The price increase would exclude many in our community's opportunity to participate and learn. As the only female golf instructor and the only one who gives group golf lessons, I do feel singled out. It is clear the threat to disallow the group lessons is directed toward me and my students, comprised primarily of women and children. Our community needs these lessons to maintain physical, mental, emotional, and even spiritual health, and frankly, this is taking a toll on my health. There is plenty of space for group lessons. As I submitted a folder to each of you, the photos speak for themselves. We drive revenue. We've been, we've received no complaints, only compliments, in six years of injury-free, accident-free. We are here to ask the mayor and each council member to step in and stop the threat to all of our health and well-being. Please help us by telling American Golf to allow our group lessons to continue. There are lessons for men and women, juniors and seniors. Every ethnicity and culture can be counted on the lesson tee, too.
Thank you. Will, you've hit your three minutes, but thank you. We appreciate, and we have received what you've provided us.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Randy Weaver, and that's my wife. She's not happy to be here, but I couldn't be prouder to be here than to be here beside her. She's a terrific person, loving, caring, giving, and always supportive of the community and doing the right thing, sometimes to her own detriment because of retaliation by people who don't behave appropriately. Quickly about myself, I have 40 years' experience in business, the last 30 as an executive, serving as CEO, COO, CFO of various companies in a number of different industries, most of them in crisis situations and turnarounds, and where there are hostile work environments, there needs to be constant management change and that sort of thing. So that's my background, kind of who I am and what I'm doing. I've witnessed the situation at Fullerton Golf Course over the last few years, and it is a crisis situation. There are a number of major issues out there. The facility is continuously in disrepair. There are dead rodents. It's operated at substandard level. The management is poorly trained or not trained at all. The general manager engages in intimidating and harassing behavior and retaliates against those who don't acquiesce to his whims. He's harassed my wife and others, and some of the students, about not wearing a mask while he stands maskless next to other people during a demo day. He harasses them about wearing a mask while he shows up to work with being exposed to COVID and endangering other people. There are a number of other issues out there that are operated at Fullerton Golf Course. The facility is not operated optimally, and it's operated by American Golf, which has lost a number of contracts over the last year, and many of them here locally in Southern California, Yorba Linda Country Club, Seacliff Country Club, Tustin Ranch Golf Club. And they're now saying that Jeanie can't teach groups there. All of the successful golf courses have group programs for juniors, for kids coming in. They have golf schools. They have things that bring, excuse me, bring people in. Somebody told me not to show up without some alternatives and some suggestions. I have taken a look at the contract, at least the contract that I have access to, and there are a number of things that can be done. First of all, the city can insist that American Golf investigate the behavior of the general manager and probably the regional manager, both of whom have seemed to have conspired to put this into effect when it's absolutely not necessary. I also think that the city can take an immediate look at what can be done to the golf course and the structure itself to really optimize it. There are some great opportunities there. When I walk into a situation that looks like a crisis, I immediately see the opportunity. And I know that you can reestablish the core identity of the business and upgrade the management team and the training.
Thank you.
I appreciate all of your attention today.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Donna Habb, and I've been a resident here in Fullerton for 35 years, something like that, so quite a while. I've had the pleasure of taking golf lessons with Jeanie Weaver many times. As a golf professional, she brings her vast experience to new and experienced golfers. I began with group lessons and learned many golf skills. I started golf after I retired. The group lessons are very important, since you're with others of a similar skill level, allowing a less stressful learning experience. Her lessons progress over time, encouraging love of the game and knowledge of the strategies and etiquette of the game and the golf course. Eliminating this experience would be detrimental to the students, many of whom are children and women. We all appreciate your consideration of this issue and ask that these lessons be continued. I've recently watched some group lessons at Fullerton Golf Course. They've been held with participants wearing masks and social distancing. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Jenny Minardi, and I too am a resident of the City of Fullerton, and I am a golfer at the Fullerton Golf Course. I learned how to play golf with Jean Weaver as my instructor. And for those of you who may play golf, you probably know that golf is a very intimidating sport, and especially for women and children. I think the best way for people to learn is to do it in a group setting, because when you're with other people, it sort of takes away the tension and makes it a much more enjoyable learning experience. And Jean also brings that about in her group lessons because she's, you know, laughing and joking and just makes everybody feel at ease. I would think that as a city, that you would also be concerned about the potential lost revenue to the city if group lessons go away, because it has been my experience that if you enjoy your lesson, then you begin to play golf. And if you begin to play golf, you are likely to join a players' club that generates monthly revenue for the city. This being said, if you take that away, many people will leave the players' club, many people will leave the Fullerton Golf Course, and I think that that's something that the city should take into consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Boucher. I'm from Placentia, and I'm here this evening in support of Jean Weaver and the group lessons at Fullerton Golf Course. On March 8th of this year, we celebrated International Women's Day with the theme being Choose to Challenge. I've been fortunate to take both private and group lessons from Jean, and she has never failed to challenge me to be a better golfer. I've enjoyed private lessons, but have found group lessons to be more beneficial. When learning with a group of golfers all at the same level, the intimidation level is reduced as we are all going through it together and having fun in the process. The sense of camaraderie that comes from a group lesson is priceless. Jean always makes her lessons fun and has an uncanny way of getting to know each of her students personally, thus relating to them on a much more personal level. I think it's important to have fun when we're playing golf, and it would be a great loss to the community if Jean was not allowed to continue to lead group lessons. Thank you for the opportunity to help support Jean and the good work she does for her students.
Hi, my name's Roberto Guzman. I'm a resident of La Habra Heights, and I'm also here to support Jean Weaver. You know, I'm a father of three kids, and so when COVID hit, a lot of the opportunities for my kids to do extracurricular activities were just wiped away or turned into a Zoom meeting, which kids quickly, you know, got tired of. So as soon as golf was open to the public, my family of three kids, my wife and I, have been taking group classes with Jeanie every Friday starting September, and most likely will continue till the rest of the year. It's been a way for my family to get outside, being that we homeschool. And, you know, I would assume also that the opportunity for other families to take group classes would be severely handicapped by the decision in front of us potentially taking that away from the ability of Jeanie to teach. As a financial advisor, and I advise a lot of business owners around the country, I also have to look at it from an economic standpoint, as a few people have mentioned. You know, a business is there to provide goods or services. If you can't bring people to the golf course, what good is the golf course? If you eliminate the ability for people in a group setting to be there, you know, you limit the potential revenue that the golf course will receive, whether it's there to buy additional snacks or something at the pro shop. So it is something that I think you should really consider addressing at the golf course. And to speak a little about Jeanie, I've taken several golf courses from different pros, and the reason my family goes to her is because she has a very special ability to teach group classes. I have a five-year-old, and if you can imagine teaching a five-year-old how to golf, it's not easy. But she makes it fun, entertaining. My kids look forward to her goodie bag every Friday that she doesn't charge us extra for, but it's something that just comes out of her heart. So losing that ability, families like mine wouldn't be able to partake or learn to support golf. So I thank you for your time, and God bless.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Poehl. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I also am here on behalf of Jeanie Weaver as a coach of my husband and I and our group lessons. And as we've lost our employment during COVID in our company, this has given us a great outlet. We live in Tustin, right across the street from Tustin Ranch Golf Course. However, those fees aren't quite as doable as Fullerton, and we've golfed in Fullerton for years, working in a business nearby, and love going to Fullerton. We've taken lessons with Jeanie and love the group environment. We've become great friends with other couples from there and other people, so we've all joined Fullerton. So we've all joined Fullerton Golf Course on behalf of that and probably wouldn't have it any other way, since that's where Jeanie's given us our lessons. So again, it's just nice, and people can bring their children. It's just been a wonderful thing for all of us, and we just hope the support and continue that she can continue the group lessons on her behalf. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to address the city council. I am Grant Cannon. I live at 708 West Union. In an effort to be concise and avoid being sidetracked, with your permission, I would like to read my statement. I would like to appeal to you to join with me in supporting the ban on overnight parking and enforcement of the three-day limit on parking. I live in a cul-de-sac. There are only four houses on my street. It's out of the way. It's not something you would see driving by. Without enforcement, I am concerned my street is becoming an RV park. The ordinances already exist. It's just a matter of enforcement. There are so many social programs for the people that are the homeless. I fail to see the connection between COVID-19 and parking on the streets overnight. I just can't make the association. It's just not in me. Is it possible they just might be playing you? One case in point is the motorhome parked across the street from my residence. He's not homeless. The Zillow estimate on the house that he lives in, $1.4 million. He's parking a hundred thousand dollar motorhome with all the attached toys. He's got a twenty-foot trailer, it's got a dune buggy on it, it's got a quad on it. I'm just thinking, it's not a matter of homelessness. He even charged the city to come out and fix the street light, so he would have light at his RV. And he wouldn't move his RV. He made the boom go over. The RV, he's so empowered. I think he's playing us. Would you think it would be easier to store the RV than moving it every three days to avoid the three-day penalty? I mean, he lives in a $1.4 million house, and he's got room on his property. I'm just afraid that the cul-de-sac will become an RV storage lot. The problem with the RV parking there, RVs don't have sewage disposal. We need to hook them up to the sewer, water hookups for sanitation, and have no trash pickup.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comment. Good evening.
Thank you for listening to us complain. After listening to some people, our complaints don't seem very, very strong. But I'm speaking on behalf of Jeanie, actually more against the management of Fullerton. I was part of the men's club for twelve years. I was a golf professional back in the eighties. Our teams were multiple winners of team play championships. We had weekly tournaments. And the new management, we've been with American Golf forever, it seems like, the new management has destroyed the team, destroyed the men's club. Everybody has found other places to play, which is fine, except now they're attacking the juniors. And when Jeanie has thirty juniors out there, twenty juniors out there, and they come out there and they want to shut that down, it's just wrong. So you people, I hope, can step in and manage the managers and not let them destroy everything for these people and their children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rose Peach. I am a resident of Yorba Linda. I work at a restaurant, Tara Wood Fired Kitchen, in Yorba Linda. I met Jeanie and Randy approximately a couple of years ago, and they've been the bright faces that would come in every week, and I would wait on them, actually. Nobody ever asked me to come here, but I found out through different avenues that this was happening with Jeanie, and I wanted to come down and tell my story. She's amazing. She's kind, she's loving. I have never golfed, so I have nothing to do with golf. I just have to do with seeing these people each week. And she's passionate, and she loves what she does. I love what she does. I don't even, I've never even picked up a golf club, but I think I might, because I want to take my grown girls for lessons. But I just want you to know, I've never even been to one of these things, actually. It's kind of interesting. I might show up just to listen to what's going on. But she's amazing, she's loving, she's kind, she deserves every bit of, every accolade she's achieved. And I just wanted to let you know that, please don't let this happen to Jeanie. She's amazing. Thanks.
Good evening, council. My name is Madeline Paugh, and I'm a resident of Fullerton, and I go to, and I'm speaking on, and I am supporting Jean in her trying to keep her group lessons. I would like to support her, because I have group lessons. I go with my sister every Saturday at 11:45, and I have forty minutes with her. She has a talent, and she can divide the fun between two different people, and it's, and she figures out a way to like, help us not just doing her job and helping us play golf, but also emotionally. Sometimes when I don't hit good, I get a little sad and grumpy, but then she tries to cheer me up, and that really helps me try to hit better. So I would like you to please help her in saving her group lessons. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Randy Lee Attanay, and I'm also a student of Jeanie Weaver's. I've been taking the lessons and was informed just recently that Fullerton Golf Course wanted to stop these lessons. I'm a widow and recently retired children's pastor. This group lesson has become very valuable to my physical and mental health. The camaraderie with the other women in the group has been such a blessing for me. It's also a very safe environment for me as well, as being a senior. I just pray that you will help us figure out a way that we can't continue doing this lovely, having this lovely opportunity. And I don't know what I would do if I did not have this at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, fellow city council members. My name is Michael Plotneck. I've been a resident in Fullerton for about six years now. I love it here. I went to high school, even though I grew up in Cerritos, but Troy High was a great school. What I want to bring to your attention is the roads. As you know, I'm glad you guys are using your SB1 funding. I saw that, so I'm thankful for that. But I read the pavement management report that came out last year, and overall, the city's at a 63.8, which is very low. And everybody knows when they get to Fullerton, because you get a massage. And I know you guys are working on the roads, which is great, because I see a lot of activity going on. But my street in particular, I live on Yermo Place, we're at a 21, which is really bad. And then the city let Sci-Fi Networks come in and rip up and put in the fiber. But why? Because they're going to eventually have to redo the road, and they may rip out the fiber, because they only put it in so low. And when Mayor Fitzgerald was running, we supported her. She told us she was going to help fix the roads and nothing. So we're hoping maybe Council Young, Council Mayor Young, maybe you can help make it happen, but our streets are really bad. They're just patchy everywhere, and we'd like to have it nice. At least just get something on the books, some kind of plan where we can have something, where we know eventually we'll get our roads repaired. But right now, there's nothing. And I've been collecting samples of asphalt. I didn't bring it in. I have a grocery bag full of it, and I'd be happy to bring it. I wanted to return city property. But I'd really appreciate if we could get something on the books for future meeting and get a plan in action. Thank you.
You know, we actually have a study session, agenda is next Tuesday, so you'll want to be sure to either attend that. I don't know, city manager, is that going to be in person, or is it going to be online? How are we going to have that broadcast?
I believe that's up to the city council discretion right now, since it is such an important issue.
We'll have it here in chambers.
Okay. I'll be there. Thank you.
Good evening.
Mayor Whitaker and fellow council members, thank you so much for your time. My name is Connor Martin. I am a teacher at Servai Catholic High School, and I'm here in support of Ms. Jeanie Weaver and the continued ongoing junior group golf lessons at Fullerton Golf Course. I just want to speak on behalf of my family and my daughter Madeline. She has been taking golf lessons with Ms. Jeanie Weaver now for over two years, and we're just overjoyed with her personal progress. She was nonverbal for the first three years of her life, and we just, we can't thank Ms. Jeanie enough for everything that...
How old is Madeline?
Madeline's now seven years old, and she's doing very well now, but with COVID and hitting during her kindergarten year, and we're just so thankful for any social interaction she can get, and she's doing absolutely wonderful now. And we're just, with the personal development she's had with learning valuable skills that golf teaches with integrity and honor and how to get along. And I'm also a golf coach at Servai, and so I know how economically feasible this option is with only $25 a lesson for the groups. It's, there's no better option in the entire world. And so I just give my full support, and I back her 100, 110%, and I'm just so honored and blessed to be up here tonight. And so thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name's Ken Clark, and we're in La Habra. And my granddaughter and my daughter both are taking, you know, group lesson with Jeanie. Jeanie's been a very encouraging and performing, you know, instructor for them. But for the way American Golf has been going and treating, you know, the lessons for the community, because this is a community thing, you know, it's Jeanie's also, but you guys as representatives for the community, we look forward to you supporting that and trying to improve that situation so that the community is not impacted by these lessons being curtailed. And we really appreciate all the efforts that you guys can do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm on your behalf of Jeanie Weaver. A little background is I'm her son. So I've grown up and seen, I've seen my mom get pushed aside a lot, because she's in a very male-dominated area where men like to rule golf. And, I mean, being on that side, yes, I see it all the time. I get treated completely different how my mom gets treated. She is Class A LPGA, whereas I'm a touring pro. I don't have the credentials that my mom does, but she gets treated so far less than I do, where she's worked so much harder for her life. So the fact that they're trying to push her out again, and they're trying to silence my mom is just tough. It's hard to see. I can use an example of March 16th, which was just recently, almost about two weeks ago, was her birthday. She got a text at 7:30 in the morning saying that she did something wrong for congratulating somebody over the speakerphone. Comes to their course, that is another female player, that she plays for Harvard, now she plays professionally. To have somebody of that stature at a public golf course, and my mom recognizes it and said congratulations on making fourth place of a tournament, and then my mom getting scolded for it on her birthday at 7:30 in the morning, that's what she wakes up to. Rather than a happy birthday text, she gets that. That is constantly what she deals with on a regular basis. So all she wants, like, her dream is just, it's not about the money. Her dream is just growing the game and enriching people's lives, making a connection. So you're, I mean, if you take away group lessons, you're taking away your dream, you're taking away your life. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, council member, council members and city of Fullerton staff. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the 35 million in federal relief funds that was granted to Fullerton, California due to the pandemic. I hope you, sorry, I'm a little nervous. At last council meeting, City Council Member Jesus Silva said that the city needs to look at its agreements with labor unions that negotiated pay cuts during the pandemic, with the understanding that should relief funding come, the cuts should be restored. Restoring 10% cuts, including, or might be your top priority. But tonight, I'm here, you can't, to ask you to manage to allocate those monies on services for people, businesses that lost their jobs, families that are struggling, vulnerable elderly people, families, et cetera. Please include the budget for our top priorities. Citizens' priorities are the roads. Those are the roads. We always come across someone, and they all are very, very mad about those roads. We need team programs. We need golf. We need all kinds of drug prevention programs, school classes, after-school programs like tutoring, mental health programs for the children. Please allocate some of them, revenue into those programs. Since you have 35, once again, I want to emphasize on 35 million dollars. Please include our, the citizens' priorities in those 35 million dollars. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Stairs, and I'm also here in support of Jeanie Weaver. I had asked my husband to speak for our family. I'm a teacher, and I've been listening to the sound of my own voice since, well, for about 12 hours now. But listening to this, I can't help but I want, I would like to add, this is my daughter Ava. She's been taking lessons in Jeanie's Junior Golf Clinic for five years now. And I will tell you, as a parent, we tried a lot of things. We tried basketball and ice skating and violin and piano and any number of things. And one day, my husband came home, who is an avid, avid golfer, and he said, I think I found a golf lesson for Ava to try. And I said, okay, let's try that. Five years later, it has still stuck. She's going to be a freshman next year, and she has every intention of trying out for the golf team. We've already met with her, with the golf coach at her high, at her future high school. And I also, it has brought her so much joy. Jeanie teaches in such an amazing way. She makes it fun, but it's not just fun and games. My child has become an exceptional golfer. She's 14 years old, and she can hold her own with her dad, who has been golfing for as long as I've known him, 30-plus years. And I also, I can't help but point out, and I know that everybody here is aware, but as an educator and as a parent, our kids have lost so much in the last year. So much has been taken from them, not the least of which is sports activities, field trips, social events, birthday parties. They have lost so much, and Jeanie has fought to give this back to them. It is outdoors. They are six feet apart. They have to be with golf clubs in their hands. Everybody is wearing a mask. It is the safest we have felt since this started a year ago. And so please, anything you can do to support her and not allow American Golf to take this away from our kids and the women that she's teaching, and most importantly, from Jeanie, because she really is the most amazing instructor I've ever known. Thank you.
Hi, I am a junior golfer. I'm speaking for Jeanne Weaver. Because like a few years ago, I started golfing. And just honestly, I'm at the point now that I can tell what is a good shot just by listening. Because I feel like I've advanced so much just by being in the class. And group lessons are a lot better than just single lessons. Because for group lessons, you have people to compare yourself to. You have people to strive to be. And you have people that are just like, I want to make sure I don't do that. And while I could go like into like a higher group of people, like go with teens and stuff, more people my age. I'd rather stick with the younger people because I find it a bit confidence building when I see people that aren't as good as me. And I also competed in a tournament in which I got fourth place. I was beat by a bunch of eight-year-olds. But it was still fun because I got to hang out with this other girl and her father. And it was just a really good experience, as, as is the rest of golf. So, yeah.
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers in chambers, I'd like to renew for those who are following via Zoom and would, oh, we do have one more.
You guys aren't reading public ecomments anymore, so I had to take the bus and show up. My name is Bernard, and I've lived in Fullerton for almost two years. While I am clearly of Asian descent, I was born here. But I am still on the receiving end of an awful lot of absurd hate. When I was in kindergarten, I learned that if you don't have anything nice to say, keep your mouth shut. Mayor Whitaker had a press conference to support the Asian-American community. Rather than support, you reinforced stereotypes and told us to get over it. I noticed Mayor Brodim Dunlap was at the same event, but didn't bother to speak. Mayor Whitaker's comments reinforced stereotypes of Asian-Americans and dismissing our struggle only shows how out of touch with reality you are. But my biggest disappointment was Councilmember Jung. You are an Asian-American, and you actually spoke about anti-Asian hate. And you have family members that experienced this. And yet you support and pander to someone like Mayor Whitaker and don't hold him accountable to the absurd things coming out of his mouth. I hope that the statements that Mayor Whitaker made were just comments made by someone who was out of, out of touch with reality, rather than having ulterior malicious motives. I hope you can reverse course with positive action and not come off as just a hater, a mindless hater. I want to thank Assemblymember Sharon Quirk Silva for hosting the event. Go Jules Bernard and go Bruins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff. My name is Jensen Hallstrom. I would like to provide something of a follow-up comment to my past, my, my previous public comment regarding unpermitted biking trails that are being cut along the Fullerton Loop. And I would like to say that the, I'd like to inform the council that this activity continues since my past comment. And especially on Braydam Hill, which is right next to Braydam Park. There's a lot of new unpermitted trails that are being cut. Indigenous shrubs and trees are being hacked by these individuals with chainsaws. And, and, you know, this kind of vegetation that they cut, some of these branches are, you know, almost like a half a foot thick and, you know, 10, 11 feet tall. They just make piles of the dead stems that they cut. And I could see that becoming something of a fire hazard as well if we continue to have a dry spring and summer. So I'd just like to inform that the activity continues. I would like to know what avenues the, the city could, could take to maybe educate the individuals who are responsible for this and to help prevent more of this kind of work from being done without public input and, and actual, you know, permission. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. And while, Madam Clerk, we look to see those who are wishing to speak via Zoom, via telephone. I wanted to just refresh that anyone wishing to do so, please utilize the raise hand feature on your computer, smartphone, or tablet. Those wishing to speak during public comment via telephone can call the number 1-669-900-9128 and enter Zoom meeting ID 871-660-87920, as we're showing on the screen at present. Then press pound sign. When prompted to enter a participation ID number, press pound sign again. Enter star nine to raise your virtual hand when you would like to speak. When it is your turn to speak, staff will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number. You will have three minutes to speak. Please remember to press star six to unmute yourself if you are calling in and to state your name for the record. Staff, do we have any Zoom comments for this item?
We currently have eight speakers. Sandra Lee, please unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Ms. Lee.
Oh, perfect. This is great. Good evening. My name is Sandra Lee, and I am a resident at Fullerton. I live on Laguna Road. I want to speak to support Coach Jeanne. You know, it's beyond me anyone would interfere with the junior golf group sessions offered by Coach Jeanne. My daughter Claire is four years old, and these group sessions are not only affordable, but there truly is no price to put on the social, emotional support it has offered her during this time. We are seeking out to you, all of you members who are voted in, to advocate for the people. This is an opportunity right now to step in and stop this atrocity. Please be our voice. You know, what are we asking for? We are simply asking the opportunity for an amazing coach to continue her love and passion for the sport. You know, in this male-dominated sport of golf, you know, she is a female, and she's also a role model to my daughter Claire. So we are asking, please intervene and allow Coach Jeanne to continue her junior group sessions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie J, please unmute.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say thank you to Mayor Whitaker, the City Council for letting us speak. I've lived in Fullerton for three years. My wife and I have lived in Fullerton for three years, and I've never felt compelled to speak at any public forum. But here I am, and I don't want to just seem a complainer because we love the City of Fullerton. We love its diversity and just the heritage that exists here. But I also want to pay a compliment to the Fullerton Police. Every interaction we've had with them has been amazing. Specifically, the homeless liaison officer. Public Works, if you don't use my Fullerton app, you should. They are amazing. They respond immediately to any graffiti or legal dumping. But I'm here to speak to the situation with enforcement of restricted parking for recreational vehicles. This has been exacerbated by COVID, but its origin is not in COVID. When we moved here three years ago, there were recreational vehicles parked illegally. We understood, we, I reached out to the city, made contact. They had very reasonable explanations for why they couldn't be moved or why there was no ticketing going on. But unfortunately, it has gotten worse. They, they were restricted to one particular area. They have now moved up. Some of the negative externalities that come from this are dog feces left around, trash left on the side of the road. Sometimes, you know, trash cans removed from our houses and then taken out into the road. And just bringing down the value of the property as well. It's not just homeless that are contributing to this. I've witnessed two RVs where people are literally parking them, like the gentleman referred to earlier, just parking them for storage because they don't want to pay for storage. They'll drop off the RV, pile into very nice vehicles, and then drive off. And the RVs will be left there for days. Sometimes we get it weeks at a time. So I'd really please encourage you to take action on existing laws. Not that I don't have empathy for anyone who is in a difficult situation. I have no problem contributing to anything to help support those who are homeless. But I, I believe that the famous man, more famous than me, said, one's person's rights extend only as far as the nose of the next person. And I think, I feel that our rights as homeowners here are being infringed upon. So I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jonah, please unmute.
Hi, my name's Jonah Brezlow. I am calling in from LANE, the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. And on behalf of, you know, your local 11, the Hospitality Workers Union in Southern California. And I just wanted to say, you know, we want to thank the council again for taking action against whole home short-term rentals. It's frankly, good public policy. We need to protect housing. You, you've heard tonight about some of the conflicts that occur due to lack of housing in the city. And so we applaud you for taking action to protect housing, neighborhoods, and good jobs. Unregulated short-term rentals turn homes into de facto hotels, exacerbate the regional housing crisis, and erode neighborhood character. The regulations proposed by the city, we create clear rules for managing short-term rentals, and will serve as a huge step forward in a model for the region. They also include effective enforcement measures that have been proven to be successful in other cities in Los Angeles and Orange County. So thank you again for making time for me to speak and for, for listening to my comments tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments.
Galaxy A10, please unmute. Press star six to unmute. Okay, we will move on. Jane Rifer, please unmute.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I wanted to make a comment because housing is so much on our agenda this year. And this is regarding consent calendar item number three. I think I'm able to speak on it even if I don't pull it. Is that correct? Speak on it during public comment here?
Yes, will allow.
Yes, I mean, and if someone would like to pull it, that would be fine. But it's a legislative update. And I'm not sure how these work, but I do see that the matrix includes a lot of items that were regarding housing. And there's a column that says watch. I didn't see that any of the columns mentioned whether there were support or oppose at this point. I'm hoping that the council will decide to support SB 15, ACA 7, and AB 1258, which seem like measures that are, that will support housing and local choice. I hope the council will also oppose SB 9 and SB 10. These are very much of concern. It seems that both of these bills contribute to housing speculation. They take away local control in land use and zoning. And SB 10 actually even squelches voters' initiative process, which of course is of huge concern. I wonder also if the policy statements that are on this matrix for these two items can be switched from policy statement 32 to policy statement 33, which emphasizes retaining local control, which is precisely the lens that I hope that the city will use to view SB 9 and SB 10, which are imposing housing and land use decisions on the city. Nine is the, they call it the duplex bill. I call it the false or the double duplex bill, which allows six units on single-family zone lots by right. I was shocked when I heard that and researched it and found that to be true. Also SB 10, which will allow 10-unit apartments with four-foot lot lines and also allow city councils to override voter initiatives. So all these are of huge concern, and I hope that the council will take a stand soon on SB 9 and SB 10, have a public discussion, and vote to oppose. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your recommendations.
Phone number ending in 631, please unmute. Press star six to unmute. Phone number ending in 631, press star six to unmute.
Hello, yes, this is Josio Lopez. And can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I would like to make my comment in a general manner for the city. What I'm getting for this meeting is that we all are suffering coming out of the COVID situation. And we are all suffering in one way or another. And our city council members, I would like you to, I would like to ask of you to take a look at all of those needs. And basically what, what we're asking is to, to pay more attention to the real needs that come to the, from the residents, that comes directly from the residents of Fullerton. We love this city. We love the, the way it is right now. We don't need any other establishments that are going to bring chaos, more violence, or any other kind of gang activity on the streets. As it is right now, it's a, it's a problem, and it's becoming a major problem. So what we need to really do is to look into the, the real needs, deeper needs that the residents of Fullerton need of housing, the street roads, the, the programs, after-school programs, the social life we used to have before this COVID situation, this COVID-19. And now as we are coming out of the COVID situation, the COVID problem, we need to start putting the dots to the i's and start getting to bring our lives back. Not the same, because we're not going to be the same as before, but better. We need to do better now. And that's what we're asking of you. We kindly asking of you that we need to come together to do better now than we were before. So I would kindly ask you to pay attention to those needs that we are having right now at hand. As you said, we don't have to bring any more other businesses that are going to destroy our youth and children's lives, but to take hand on the problems that we already have as the city is right now. And thank you very much for your attention, and that's my comment for tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Jose Casaneda, please unmute. Jose Casaneda, please unmute.
Good evening, council. Jose Trinidad-Casaneda. Congratulations on the Arbor Day proclamation. As a follow-up to that, my comment is to request any updates from our Urban Forest Management Plan application. I believe I, there was something in the OC Register in January this year where Fullerton was awarded a grant from the state to plant more trees and have a robust urban forest management plan. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and if you'd be able to agendize any updates from West Coast arborists on that status. That would be wonderful for our community, since we are heading into the summer and we are expecting severe heat temperatures. And last, I just wanted to amplify Maureen Milton's comments that she is requesting help for anyone who can help her find some Airbnb listings or just affordable stays at hotels or other local places where she can get around. Because people with disabilities are in need, and sometimes we tend to gloss over that. So I just wanted to make sure that our community hears that request for help from Maureen, who's been a longtime community member and very active with our city here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, how many more speakers do we have?
I will ask our meeting host how many more Zoom speakers we have.
We have one more. I will try again for Galaxy A10. Please unmute.
There we go.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elsa Montero. I'm just, I live in Fullerton for almost, what, 12 years? And I worked for the Hilton Hotel for 22 years. And I'm just trying to bring it up again. I've been on those meetings before, and about the short-term rentals is affecting the hotel industry and all the employees, especially right now with the pandemic. I'm being off, laid off from my job since the pandemic. That's already a year. And I don't think we're having any opening pretty soon, because we don't have any conventions. And when we don't have conventions, all of business depends on the families and people struggling. And instead getting rooms, booking rooms on the hotel, they're doing this con rental. So, and I don't think this is very good for people that work for the hotels. And I'm telling you, especially right now. So I don't know. I just want to bring this up and see if there is something, people working out on that situation, what is going to be the best for people that have those homes and the people that weren't having jobs on the hotels. And especially with this rentals, I think we're not getting any, for all the hotels that, I don't think we're getting more business we used to like, especially right now with the pandemic. So that's all what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker. LL, please unmute.
Hi, good evening. This is Munish Farid. Watch. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, very low volume there. Is there anything you can do to speak?
Sorry about that. How's that? Is that any better?
A little better, yes.
Sorry about that. Hey, I wanted to address, you know, sentiment that had come up about the mayor and the mayor pro tem not being supportive of Asians. And as an Asian American, as well as someone who immigrated from Asia to this country, I wanted to say that all of my experiences and interactions with our mayor Bruce Whitaker and mayor pro tem Nick Donlap have always been respectful. They've always been open-minded to any ideas I've had. And they've never made me feel anything other than included and as a valuable member of this community. On another note, with the money that recently came in through the federal government coming in, I would sincerely hope that there's a long-term strategy behind that money and that it's not used, for lack of a better term, frivolously towards pet projects or anything. But that we really consider using it to make things right for some of our city workers. It definitely took a big hit over the last few years. And as we know, unfortunately, Fullerton is used as a stepping stone for other cities. People come here, get trained, and then leave, and it really does affect us financially when that happens. So please consider using that money, not just to reward valuable workers, but also retain them. I know that's not always a popular thing to be said, but I think it's very important to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more Zoom speakers.
Okay, with that, I will bring the discussion back and request that our city manager address anything that he feels needs to be addressed from those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Let me go through my notes on this. With regard to the RV parking on Walnut, Valencia, and elsewhere, and then just also in general parking enforcement. For the RV parking, we are not enforcing right now the RV parking ordinance that was passed, and that will more likely be coming back for a slight amendment. We are working with the community groups, Orange County Mental Health, Pathways of Hope, the faith-based groups, to include Fullerton Act, the Tri Parish Council, FEMA, on a lot of issues. We've been probably over now the last three weeks doing a lot of outreach and engagement with those folks living in their vehicles or in RVs. Also with the business owners, we were out there. We had a 40 cubic yard bin delivered on Monday to help with clearing a lot of debris that had piled up on one of the private properties from those who were parking on the public streets and continue to do that. But there will be, you know, timeframe in about two weeks that we will start enforcing certain issues. And again, the goal is to make sure that people do have housing. Those that consider themselves housed is a different issue, but we're working on that. Want to reiterate that after a period of over two weeks of warnings for overnight parking and street sweeping parking and all that stuff, the city and our contractor, SB Plus, is now enforcing those issues. So some issues will get better. Some people may complain about parking tickets, but we are enforcing those parking tickets now. With regard to the Gene Weaver and the American Golf, so the city of Fullerton does contract with American Golf Corporation for management of the Fullerton Golf Course. We do have a management agreement with them. That comes to term, I believe, in December of 2025. I did reach out to them last week, because Mrs. Weaver did reach out to the city and the city council. One of the issues I asked about was the group lessons. Right now, what I was told is that corporation-wide, American Golf is not allowing group lessons. But that's all in regards to the pandemic. So in my talking with them and in my interaction with the county on a weekly basis, multiple times on conference calls, I did let them know that, you know, in Orange County, we are now firmly in the orange, and we are progressing towards the yellow, and we hope to be in the yellow in May. And so therefore, I would hope that they would also adjust their policies. If they were prohibiting group play and group lessons because of COVID, that they would strongly reconsider that. And I will double-check back with them based on some of the issues that were brought up tonight. So there was a question about the roads, and I know that the city council, Mayor Pro Tem Donlap said that, yes, next Tuesday, April 13th, we'll be having a study session on that. And it will be here. We'll get more information out through our social media networks. The, let's see, on, yes, unpermitted biking trails and manipulation to the trails. We do want to encourage people, please don't, you know, remove native plants and other things and to amend the trails, because while you may be creating a jump for yourself, you're creating a liability for the city, which we all pay for. We are out there trying to correct any of those things that we see. We're also going to be looking at increased signage. But we really, when it comes to trails, depend on the people who are out there to just, you know, do no harm to the trail system and to the fauna and flora around there. So I think those were the major issues. Mayor, members of council, if there's anything else, please let me know, and I'll get back to that.
You know, Ken, if I could, Mr. City Manager, I had some concerns. Because I, you know, I know I brought you specifically, I think, two to three weeks ago, some of the notes from the conversation that I had with Ms. Weaver. And, you know, I think we have a disagreement over how this should be handled with American Golf. Because as a vendor that we contract with as a city, and if they're going to do business this way, and they're going to make these changes to the services provided to our community, be it about programming, be it about classes that are offered, or be it about pricing, you know, this is a public golf course. It's not a private country club, you know, that can change prices or increase prices and eliminate, you know, the programs that are offered. Yeah, this is something that's provided, you know, for the use of Fullerton residents. And it's intended to be used by Fullerton residents. You know, it's intended to be affordable, I think, for Fullerton residents as well. And it just, it's, I find this very concerning, you know, that obviously you see, I think we had probably 20 to 25 people come in to speak on behalf of the group programs, you know, the benefits that they provide to the community. And, you know, the fact that this isn't more of an issue for us to want to get involved and to reach out to American Golf and tell them, "Hey, this is how you're going to do this on our behalf, because you're our vendor." I'd like to see us be a little more assertive and a little more authoritative with them on our behalf, especially because there is still four years left on that contract. I think that's, we have every right to do that, you know, as a city who has contracted with this vendor to provide those services on our behalf. You know, and I might also note that we're not really thrilled with the service that they're providing. If this is the type of thing that we're having to hear from, you know, customer after customer, and this is just people that have come in tonight. You know, as a fairly new council member, you surely haven't seen it all. But to see that this many people were so frustrated and so concerned with, you know, the actions of a vendor who is doing business on our behalf, you know, I find that concerning and would like us to be, you know, like to see us be more assertive with them and tell them, you know, "These group classes are going to stay." Because what we do know is that they are actually, in effect, still, you know, American Golf, because I took the time to call around, they are actually holding them at other courses. They're just, Fullerton apparently is no longer doing it. And so I think it's really important, you know. And that's also something that concerned me was, in my discussion with you, you know, you indicated that you didn't want the city to get involved with it. And on the other hand, you know, this is absolutely something that the city should get involved with. And so I'd like to see us be a little more assertive here and make sure that we can get these services back to our community.
And if I, it wasn't that I didn't want to get involved. It's whether we had the ability to get involved based on the contract we have with them. So I almost certainly talked to the city attorney's office about, you know, based on the contract language, we are looking at bringing back an amendment to the contract. Because as we do know, we're under a management agreement that was changed in 2010. Prior to that, it was a kind of a standard lease agreement, which was better for the city. And the management agreement has not been so, based on some of the financial issues going on there. And so, yeah, we want to bring that back. That may be a time also to identify these issues. But if, most certainly, if they did not tell me the truth that this was a corporate policy to not have group lessons, but that we do know that they are having group lessons at other American Golf courses, then that would be of concern to me too. So I do appreciate that information.
Also, if I may.
Thank you. Did you, I just want to clarify. I know you spoke with American Golf. Did you have the opportunity to speak with Ms. Weaver ahead of tonight? No, I did not. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to make sure the council understands this is not an agendized item. But I do, Councilmember Jung is expressing an interest.
Thank you. I would concur with the mayor pro tem that we use all the leverage that we have as a council and as a city to encourage vendor-like American Golf that's serving our citizens and our neighbors to make sure that they're in compliance with our expectations. That said, they are a private corporation. I'm not sure that we have much jurisdiction in who they hire and fire. Understood. But Coach Weaver, there are plenty of folks that come here, and this is why I wanted to speak to you personally, that grandize us on the dais or scream at us on the dais, deservedly so. Very rarely do I see all these folks come out for an individual. Coach means a great deal in my book, so I encourage you to fight on. Great work. Great work.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question on this matter? You can. I'm just a little concerned about developing a consensus here on action and non-agendized. It is just a question to the city manager on this. Sure, go ahead. There were some, there was mention of substandard conditions there. I'd like to see us also look into those as well for code enforcement. There was mention of rodents. I think that is very concerning if we can include that in your investigation of this.
Question on another item.
Okay.
On, there's Maureen's item about the elevator being shut down for two weeks at a senior living place with no way to get down. Is that legal, I guess, or how long can they close, shut down an elevator when there's no way down?
So we've been discussing that. We have been in contact with Maureen, and maybe Matt can do it. But, yeah, we don't believe so. That's, they have to provide ingress egress on that. So if I need to get and talk to the property manager, be it they in Michigan or wherever, we will do that. But Matt, do you want to give a, okay, another further update? But we do know that we have contacted Department of Fair Housing about this issue, because, yeah, we don't believe that is absolutely right whatsoever. So.
It would pretty be significant legal issues if that's factually accurate.
Okay. Yeah, we could follow up with that. Thank you.
I do want to thank everyone who came and provided us, you know, your opinions and your views, your comments this evening. Appreciate that. We're fortunate that things are changing a little bit. Now we're allowing, we're required to still limit in social distance, but we have at least twice the number normally in our chambers. We have about a couple dozen people here in a facility that normally is 99 or a little bit more with overflow. So we are doing our best to encourage those who wish to address the council to be able to do so, and in multiple ways. Someone mentioned the ecomments not being read at council. Well, we're doing what we can to keep the normal council flow going. And at a regular council meeting, we never had the practice of reading aloud all the letters or printed comments that came in. They are part of the record. They are maintained, and they're included as part of the record for a council meeting. But we really have no intention of doing so, of reading all the printed matter that comes in during a council meeting. And with that, then we are at the point of council comments. And maybe we'll start, we'll start with Councilmember Zahra, if that's okay, and we'll go north to south here.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just report a little bit on some of the activities I've had. It's been a fairly active few weeks. And I know that, first of all, we, I want to thank the Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk Silva for hosting a press conference that, in support of our Asian-American community here in Fulton and elsewhere. I know many people went and spoke passionately and eloquently in support, and I was happy and proud to stand with them. And so I'm grateful for her leadership in this. Also, I was really honored to go and attend an event in support of the people of Myanmar, who are right now going through really hard times in their, in their country. And I know we have a lot of people of Myanmar descent here in America. And we, they held a rally at the city of Stanton that hosted it, and many people attended that. And I was happy to stand with them in support of democracy. You know, coming from a country like Syria that has been ravished with war in the past 10 years. It was important for me to do that. And I also held, had a visit to our, in the installation of our PFAS treatment plant. For all of you who have been following the water situation, we have PFAS, are these chemicals in our water that have been in there for a long time. And we have been able to start finally installing some of these treatment plants. And the first one was in Kimberly Well 1A. And the first one was in Kimberly Well 1A. And I was happy to see that happening. It'll clean up our, hopefully they'll be in operation by June, and then there'll be more treatment plants coming in our main plant as well. So, and that's the culmination of two years' worth of work at the Orange County Water District. And I want to thank them, and I want to thank our staff for, for all the cooperation. I also got a chance to volunteer at the vaccination site that we held at the community center here. And I want to thank our supervisor, Doug Chaffey, for all the support they've lent us in, in putting this together. I want to thank also the Center for Healthy Neighborhoods that have, that were able to really sign up a lot of people who normally wouldn't have been able to access computers or sign up. And, and also Latina access, health access that also participated. And of course, our, our community center staff who also volunteered. It was a, a great experience to see so many people get vaccinated. I also held a community forum with our police chief, Bob Dunn, and I want to thank him for, for coming to this virtual town hall. And I want to thank the Fulton Collaborative, specifically Debbie, Dr. Debbie Stout and Ms. Liana Farcochi for, and the entire Fulton Collaborative Board for partnering on this. We had great community feedback. We updated the community on the, on the, on our police department, what's going on, and answered a lot of questions. The event is still a forum, if, for those who missed it or would like to attend to see it, it is on YouTube or on the Facebook Fulton Collaborative page. So you can go and watch that. And it's also on my Facebook page. There's a link there. If you scroll down, you'll see it. And lastly, I'd like to say that I also, I know the Center for Healthy Neighborhoods hosted an event honoring some of the men who have been working very hard in the community. And, you know, during this, you know, COVID, I think we've seen a lot of heroes step up to the plate and, and serve our community in ways that we've never seen before. And, and I'd like to mention their names. They were really fantastic members of our community, especially, who have really served in amazing ways. And they are Mr. Andres Solis, Benjamin Sanchez, Felipe Perez, Edgar Rosales, and Andrew Judd Freery. And during that event, it was Women's History Month. So during that event, I, I figured I'll start a new trend. And I honored two women in, in our community. And it's going to be a new trend, hopefully, called District Five's Woman of the Year. And hopefully, maybe we can start this in other districts as well, and maybe do one for the city. But I'd like to just acknowledge that the honoree for Woman of the Year in District Five was Igleth, Ms. Igleth Nunzi. She is just an amazing woman who has done tremendous work in our community, not just in South Fulton, but she's worked in our police department and volunteered with our, with, in so many food drives that she's held, helped with our census program, and, and, I mean, I can go on and on. I, I, I do want to acknowledge that she is in Bolivia with, her mom just passed away. So I want to say that our hearts, our thoughts and prayers are with her. And I, I hope that we all pray for her safe return and for her family in this time. I also honored a Young Woman of the Year for District Five, and that's young Lizzie Galarsa, who is a, I've seen her in so many food drives with her mom. She's also a volunteer in our police, Explorer, Explorer program. And now she's a cadet as well. She was just recently accepted. So congratulations to both of them, and hopefully we'll do another one next year. That is it, Mr. Mayor. If anybody wants to follow my activities and learn more, I'm always accessible. And I do host my monthly meetings, and I post them on my Facebook page, Ahmad, Facebook's forward slash Ahmad's, our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. You know, first, I just wanted to say I'm so encouraged with things getting somewhat back to normal. I actually had the opportunity to attend and throw out the first pitch at the Golden Hill Little League Opening Day ceremonies the other day. And you all be happy to know that not only did I actually throw from the mound, but I threw a strike. You know, it wasn't until I got there and was so, you know, they asked if I wanted to warm up or not, that I realized, gosh, what am I in for? But fortunately, I still had the arm. So it was, that was, that was nice. But having said that, it was just, it was, it was great to be back there and great to see so many families and, you know, parents, coaches, players, volunteers that are just, you know, so energized about being able to be back out playing baseball. So, you know, really enjoyed that opportunity. And the one last thing I would like to say, we, we did talk about it a little bit earlier, but next Tuesday evening, 6:30 here, you know, we will be discussing, you know, what's, I think, most near and dear to Fullertonians' hearts. You know, of course, that's our road conditions, you know, road streets and infrastructure. We've got a study session agendized, and so I think it'll be a very informative night. Where we'll all be able to learn a little bit more about what's going on and some of the potential solutions to those problems. So I'd ask that you join us either here in the chambers or that you watch remotely, wherever you're comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I listened intently this evening to many of the public speakers, and I can't agree more with, with many of the comments this evening, particularly, at least to begin with, with our streets, with the state of our streets. When I first served as mayor, it was back in 2013. And I called attention at that time to our pavement condition index from our own audits, the PCI, which was at best a D-minus grade, basically, was where we were at. We've been struggling for years to try to obtain consensus on a council to make this a top priority. And I'm very hopeful that with all the public input that we're getting, that this council will do that, that they'll stand up and make this a top priority. Second thing, oh, and in fact, this, a few days ago, my wife and I were able to get away for the first time in a couple of years. But even then, fairly local, it was Nevada and Arizona. And one thing that, that helped me understand that it could even be worse in Fullerton was, we took a non-off-road vehicle on the back route to Oatman, Arizona. And if anyone's familiar with that, it's an act of bravery to do something like that. And so before we enter into that category of rough roads, we need to do something. This council needs to act on that. I would like also to comment on the, on the golf course situation, but again, we're going to be prevented from doing that. But what I'd like to do is request an agenda item at our very next council meeting involving this topic, so that we may thoroughly discuss where we're at on this item. And I would ask for a second, but luckily you helped make me mayor, I can just agendize it. So I'll do that. The report that I had, it was covered partly by Councilmember Zahra, which was prior to heading out of town. My wife and I were able to also witness the installation of the PFAS and PFAS water treatment plant, the small water treatment plant that was being installed over at the Kimberly, Kimberly Well 1A. And this is the first of many expensive installations, which now are attempting to address the very, very minute regulations, the water quality regulations, which are now down to a handful of parts per trillion. And that's requiring now wholesale cleanup of most of our groundwater. So we'll be experiencing many of these installations. And once the water is cleaned up, which it will be thoroughly through these water processing plants, that water will be directly sent into potable water through our supply. And it will take many years to be able to attain that level of purity for the groundwater for the basin. But we're moving very quickly to do that, Orange County Water District, and there will be more to come on that. One, one other water-related item is, I serve as commissioner at SAPA, which is the Santa Ana Watershed Project Authority. And we had a meeting again this morning. One of the features that we're working on right now is a proposal to do ground-based cloud seeding. And in this case, it really wouldn't even be ground-based, it's mountainside-based, pretty much. And the effort at cloud seeding would be to obtain more precipitation from our existing minimal rainfall levels. This year, the, it's looking like an especially dry year this year. So experience in other areas, particularly close to us, Santa Barbara and other points north and throughout the country, Idaho as well, they've used these methods. It's almost a flare-based type system, which ejects silver iodide, very minute particles of silver iodide off mountainsides, and the heat of which is carried upward and through storm flow as well. Now, we're all familiar, or at least most, most people are familiar with aircraft-based cloud seeding. That's an option as well, but in our area, it's going to be a little bit limited. And far and away, the cost-effective approach is the ground-based. And so there will be more to come from that. But that is being supported generally at the Orange County Water District because we're downstream, and any amount of extra precipitation that we can harvest during our, our short rain season could be helpful. It could increase as much the yield, 12% or 15%. And in a year like this, that's helpful to recharge the aquifer, the, the basin. And we're already running pretty late, so I'll stop right there. And Councilmember Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's heartbreaking to report again that attacks on Asian-Americans continue. The Orange County DA's office recently charged a Fullerton man with a hate crime for throwing rocks at a Korean mother and child. It made national news to my utter embarrassment. These attacks are a call to action for us all, because a man cannot ride your back unless it is bent. So I continue to encourage all of you to stand up tall and fight racism in all its forms. April is also Autism Awareness Month. I want to credit everyone in our community that has raised awareness and educated us about autism. It is through your great work that has jackhammered stereotypes and myths surrounding it, and I cheer on your great work. Finally, the more things change, the more they seem to stay the same. I want to reiterate and reinforce the mayor's concerns. In 2011, the Alabama Crimson Tide won the national championship in college football. 2011 was also the beginning of California's worst drought in its long history. From 2011 to 2017, well over 200 million trees were killed by the drought. Farm allocations were cut in half, which had a direct impact on the entire world economy because California produces half of all of this country's fruits, nuts, and vegetables. The low snowpack forced the governor at the time to order cities to reduce their water usage by 25%. And Fullerton, as a result, basically stopped watering grass in his parks. Restrictions were imposed, everything from washing your car on your front lawn to fishing bans. Fast forward a decade later, and the Crimson Tide won the national championship once again this year, and California has returned to drought conditions once more. Snowpack in the Sierra Nevada is far below average. Rainfall this year has been a third of where we needed to be. And we are all at, or very near, historic lows. Once again, I can report with great confidence that the Metropolitan Water District is proactively preparing for these shortages, and I will do my part to represent Fullerton water users equitably and efficiently. We're fortunate in Fullerton because we have become much better at storing water, but we cannot ignore the impacts of climate change. We can't mask our continued contributions to it. We have to accept our responsibilities are and try and mitigate it. And while we are not at the dire, if it's mellow, let it, or if it's yellow, let it mellow. If it's brown, fresh it downstage just yet. It would certainly benefit us all if we could take a moment to reflect on immediate threats to our quality of life, like current drought conditions and violence against Asian-Americans, and fight them as hard as we seem to bicker over so many trivial pursuits that dominate our national discourse. In the meantime, please consider turning off your faucets when brushing your teeth. Try limiting the amount of times you run the garbage disposal, and plant drought-resistant seed on lawns. Lastly, if I may, I'd like to agendize a resolution for our April 20 meeting, denouncing Asian-American hate crimes. And if I can get a second, I'd certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr.
Mayor.
I will second that.
All right.
Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, two of the items you all covered, the, the water treatment tanks, I was there, so great. We have the first treatment plant in, in Orange County in Fullerton, so. And the other one was just to acknowledge the Richmond volunteers, the resident, the four, the five men they got it, so congratulations. And lastly, I will be holding, coming back to my walk-in talks, and my first one will be on April 24th, it's a Saturday, 9:00 AM at Craig Park. It'll be at the entrance of Craig Park. And this is actually, we'll, a coffee and conversation, so we'll join me at 9 o'clock. I'll provide the coffee. We'll sit around, socially distanced, and hopefully our numbers will get better so we can get a little closer and hear, be able to hear better. But come by, the 24th, 9:00 AM at Craig Park, right at the entrance, and we'll, we'll chat. And with that, let's move on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We will now consider the consent calendar. I would...
Still moved?
Okay.
Second.
Approval moved and seconded by Mayor Protem Dunlap, seconded by Councilmember Zahra.
And Mayor, if I may, I, I forgot one thing. The deal with the consent calendar. I'd just like to thank everyone for putting together a resolution to, to recognize April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And if I may, just take the liberty to read two short paragraphs that I...
I was going to ask you to do so, but please.
I, so, I know we're wondering, well, just whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community, including the city of Fullerton, whereas the leadership, with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in our society and in Fullerton through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. Whereas the city of Fullerton strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council, that the city of Fullerton recognizes April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and hopes that each day of the month and year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. And with that, we do have a motion and a second on the first 10 items, our consent calendar this evening. So roll call, Madam Clark?
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zahra?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Our first item, we have no public hearings this evening, and our first item of regular business is item number 11, the Adopt a Park and Trail Program. I believe that presentation to be made by our city manager?
Actually, the Acting Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Alice Loyah, will provide that.
I didn't see you. Great.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Alice Loyah from the Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight, I'm going to present to you our proposed Adopt a Park and Trail Program. Next slide. The city of Fullerton has 53 parks and lots of acres of parkland, 28 miles of trails. And, you know, we're lucky here in Fullerton to have so many parks and trails. One of the things that we need help with from the community is helping us maintain those parks and trails. So we would like to start an Adopt a Park and Trail Program to help city staff and the city residents to continue to enjoy the beautiful parks and trails. The idea is to get local groups, organizations, whether they're nonprofit or whether they're public or pri- whether nonprofit or whether they're public or private, to fill out an application to want to adopt a park or a trail and maintain it for a whole year, at least once a month. There are many other cities who do this type of program, and we think it'll be beneficial to the city of Fullerton to have that as well. We're hoping to start with 10. You know, we can have as many, you know, we can have as many as 53 participants that want to help us. But the idea is for them to help us picking up litter. Let's see, sorry. Weeding some of the trails, adding tree mulching, cleaning our tables and benches, our picnic pavilions and our park equipment, and reporting repairs and graffiti through the MyFullerton app. Sorry about that. We would like to kick off this promotion of our Park and Trail, Adopt a Park and Trail, at the Love Fullerton that will be at the end of this month. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you about the program.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for the work on this. I know we've talked a lot about trying to get the community. I know a lot of members in the community have asked me, hey, how can we volunteer? How can we volunteer? So this is great. I love it. The question I had is, what would be, what would the process as far as like, is it an individual can just sign up and then recruit people? Or is it an organization that has to sign up and recruit people?
It doesn't have to be an organization, but it's usually a business or an organization that wants to sign up for a particular park or trail that they're interested in adopting for the whole year. We do have an application, and on that application, they can pick and choose where they want to, what area they want to adopt, whether it's a whole park or a section of a trail. And it is not limited to organizations. It could be anybody, a group of people, a group of friends if they wanted to.
Yeah, I know a bunch of us would like to do that, so.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah.
We will provide trash cans and gloves, or trash bags and gloves.
That's great. Last time we did that, we actually brought our own. But if you're giving the trash bags, it'd be great. I just want to, just one last question on this. As far as getting our schools involved and maybe some of the youth, would we be able to maybe encourage them to come in return for maybe school credit or some sort of credit they'll get with their, this might encourage them to join?
Yes, we have had different organizations from the high schools, like the Key Club or some other organizations, that wanted to come out to do one-time or a weekend type of cleanup, and we did sign their paperwork to give them school credit. So we could do the same thing with the Adopt a Park and Trail Program as well.
Two questions. I guess the first would be, you know, where did sort of the sponsorship cost come from? Is that, did you guys do like a market study of neighboring cities or municipalities to see what they charge? Or how did those costs?
We're not charging for anything. You just apply, you're going to provide your own. The cost was, how much would it cost to buy trash bags and gloves? That sort of thing. So that's where the cost comes from. It doesn't cost.
1,200 annual cost, something like that? Is that?
Right, that would just be for the supplies that we would be providing. And this was an estimate of, okay, if we can get 10 groups at the beginning, it would cost approximately this much for those 10 groups for us to buy trash bags and gloves.
And then I guess the next question would be, so how much money are we saving as a city by, you know, leveraging some of these opportunities?
Well, that I did not calculate, but we can for you. But it does save a lot of staff time because right now, it's very difficult with the low amount of staff that we have in both Parks and Rec and Public Works to go out and continually pick up trash and maintain the parks. So this is very helpful. So it's more of a second set of hands, a second set of eyes to help us with some of the maintenance of the parks and trails.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on Councilman Zara's, we might want to go through the PTA programs because I'm sure somebody in the PTA would want to adopt a park for the Hermosa Elementary or Nicholas Junior High. So anyway.
Absolutely. We are planning to market this, put it on social media, trying to get everybody who would like to be involved, involved in this program. So we're not limiting.
I will be a sponsor to one, so if I could.
Fantastic.
Save me one, in case I don't call you tomorrow.
I'll get you an application.
All right, very good.
With over 30 miles of trails, there's certainly ample opportunity for people to do what they can on this.
Yes, and some of our parks are big and will probably require more than one group. So there's plenty of, there's plenty of room.
Well, I appreciate the simplicity at which we've gone at this. And it's very easy to get these things wrapped in red tape and all sorts of requirements and record-keeping and the like. So I, my compliments to this type of a program, and we could use more like this, in my opinion.
Thank you.
But this is pretty much a mom and apple pie item, I think, for us to consider. And if there's no further comment at this point, we'll open it up to the public to address this.
Don't see a lot of demand in council chambers for public comments. Do we have anyone registered for Zoom comments?
We do not have any Zoom comments.
Then since it's basketball season, it may be a slam dunk here. Please with the roll call.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Silva and seconded by Councilmember Zara.
And.
It was you. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought I wasn't looking. Maybe with the mask on, I heard it wrong. Okay. Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
With that, we're on to item number 12, which is, the subject is Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation, SB 1 Account Funds Allocation. This item submitted by our city manager, prepared by Meg McWade, Director of Public Works, and David Grantum, Principal Civil Engineer. Mr. Grantum, good to see you.
Thank you, nice to see you. Hopefully you can hear me okay with this mask on. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I am David Grantum, Principal Civil Engineer. I handle, I manage the Capital Improvement Division upstairs in engineering. And today, I want to talk to you about how possibly we can spend some of our street money next year. So a little background, SB 1, most people know it as the new gas tax, has been around since 2017. It is restricted funding, can only be used to do basic roadway maintenance, so it can't be used for anything else that you want. So basically, all the money comes to the engineering department, and we use it on the roads. The funding started in 2017, 18, and we've done five projects so far to date, as shown on the screen. Little hard to see, but we started with Chapman Avenue over on the east side. We're finishing up Commonwealth and Raymond right now. We're in progress of Euclid Phase 1. Euclid Phase 2 will start late summer this year. And Orange Stock will start in a couple of weeks. So we're making pretty good progress. Now, to receive this funding, there are requirements. We have to submit to the state what projects we plan to do. And as part of that, we have to do a public review. So I have taken the proposed projects to INRAC, and they did recommend these projects in their February 24 meeting. We do use our PMP plan as a guide as to which projects or what streets we can pick. And ultimately, we need to come before you, City Council, for a resolution approving the projects that we are recommending. So on the previous projects that we've done, they're kind of in the middle or the east side of the city. So kind of chose to go to the west side of the city. We'll try and work our way around the city a little bit. So the first project is Valencia Drive, Magnolia to Gilbert. This project will include some sewer maintenance work, replacing of the main, so they will contribute a little bit to the streetwork cost. But there will be no extensive water main work on this project. The one downside to working this area is the time it's going to take to do the project. Because Valencia Elementary is in this segment of roadway, my plan is not to do this work until summer of 2022 to avoid significant conflicts with all the school traffic. And here's a map showing the limits that we're proposing, Magnolia to Gilbert. Project 2, Rosecrans. Basically going from the city limits on the west to Sunny Ridge on the east, which is just past the Fire Station 6. A lot of people have noticed that Buena Park, this past week, finished paving there right-of-way along Rosecrans. So there's an obvious difference between who's city is what out there. No extensive utility work required on this project, so it's all going to be street paving. And here is the limits of work. With that, my recommendation is we adopt the resolution for Valencia Drive and Rosecrans Avenue using SB 1 funds next year.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Is this all the SB 1 funds that we will be getting for this cycle?
The next year, yeah, 2.7 million.
That's all we're getting? Yeah, okay.
It's been an ongoing disappointment. I appreciate that question in that we in Fullerton pay, by my calculation, about 19 million per year on this road repair tax that we were promised a great deal from. And this is our net. Our net is, it's been around $2.5 million a year.
It's going up about 100,000 a year, approximately. Not much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so you just mentioned that you're using the pavement management plan to help you dictate which streets and kind of you want to spread them out through the town? Okay, so has that, because that PMP, when did we do that? Wasn't that just a few years ago or?
We have to update it and submit to OCTA every two years.
Okay.
So the arterial streets are inspected every two years, and the residential's have to be done once within a six-year period.
Oh, okay. And I think maybe that's the one. And do we do that or do we?
No, I have a consultant do it. They have to be certified through OCTA.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we would invite public comment on this item. If there are any members of the public in attendance who wish to speak, come forward. And otherwise, we'll check our Zoom.
I see no one in chambers coming to the microphone. Do we have any Zoom comments?
I had one comment for you, Mr. Grantum, is I believe that the choices that have been made here as far as priorities are really excellent choices. And I think they're fairly widespread in the city, and they're trying to address some of the, some of the most egregious situations that we have. At least where there's a lot of traffic.
It is very tough because no matter what street you pick, no one, someone's not going to be happy. But we do our best.
No, I was impressed by this selection, really was. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Do we have any Zoom comments?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
I move the item.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Zara, seconded by Mayor Protem Dunlap. And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And we're on to lucky item 13 here, which is, the subject is Illegal Cannabis Business Enforcement Two-Year Pilot Program. And prepared by Matt Folks, Director of Community and Economic Development. And we have a report. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and members of the council. My name is Giarmina Torrico, and I will have a brief presentation for you regarding this item. This program includes staffing for one non-regular part-time code enforcement who will be solely assigned to enforcement of illegal cannabis in the city. This code enforcement officer will dedicate 28 hours a week to enforce illegal dispensaries and illegal cultivation. The cost of this program is 72,193, which includes the prorated salary for the fiscal amount of this current year. This program's objective is to create a focused and consistent code enforcement for the illegal cannabis program by allowing this code enforcement officer to inspect every single illegal business at least five times a week, while also still allowing for time for documentation and research, and also holding the operators and the owners accountable by issuing citations in a timely manner. The slide provided before you today is a high level of this code enforcement process, and I will try to walk you through each one of these steps. So this process first starts when our office receives a complaint from the public reporting an illegal business. Upon receipt of that complaint, our staff inspects the business within one to two business days. And if illegal, an illegal use is confirmed, a notice of violation is issued to the property owner and the business owner, directing them to close and cease the illegal business. If they still don't close, citations are issued progressively up to the amount of $1,800. And at that point, if they still do not close, the city will pursue to declare the business a public nuisance and issue an order to cease the illegal use. If they still don't respect that order, then the city will pursue legal action against the owner by petitioning the court for an abatement order to force the closure and the illegal use. So that is the code enforcement process. Again, it's at a high level, and based on our average and every step that's taken from receipt of the complaint to the close, it's averaging at a six-month time process. The recommendation action before you today is to approve the appropriation of 10,700 to the 2021 fiscal budget year to initiate this two-year pilot cannabis enforcement program. And with that, thank you. Thank you. For your time.
I have some question. I have a question. What, when, when they go out, I know we have some very obvious and conspicuous illegal operators. They're out there with flyers sometimes. And how would we identify the ones that are not conspicuous, that are ones that are hiding? Because I see, I see this, you know, if you're cracking down on some of them, they'll probably go into hiding. They won't be as advertising as obvious. How can we, how can we still continue to identify those? Do we have a method to do that?
If we receive a complaint, we'll conduct inspections, and the officer will monitor the property. So if it's a dispensary, there is going to be activity. You're going to observe the patrons going in and purchasing the product. If it's a cultivation facility, it's more obvious. As soon as you approach the building, you smell the product, and it's more obvious to detect.
But it still, it still would require someone to make a complaint or a tip to identify, right?
Oh, I see, yes.
So it wouldn't, so.
Or if a staff observes it while they're out doing another inspection.
So we can also, are we using Weed Maps? Weed Maps to go, because they list them all right there, right?
Weed Maps, there was some litigation a couple of years back, and they still have some of them. But they were sued for advertising illegal businesses. So the ones that still find a loophole to advertise are still there, but there's Yelp and Google that advertise.
Yeah, and a lot of them have already established a network. Yeah, and a lot of them have already established a network. They have their own database of people, so they reach them, they just let them know where the next location is.
That's correct.
So I'd like us to see a more proactive approach as opposed to just waiting for people, because otherwise, this person could go and crack down on one or two, the ones that are obvious, but then there may be six in hiding and they will never know about if they're not proactively going out and seeking them. And one thing I'd like to see is looking at, there's always repeat offenders. So I've seen places that have been cited in the past, and then they go back and start all over again. I'd like us to look at some of those properties as well, and some places that have been cited in the past and go out and observe those as well.
Yes, thank you.
We would seek public comment on this item at this stage. If there are no further questions by council, I see none. Any members who wish to address this item, please come forward. And simultaneously, we'll be seeking any Zoom comments.
I see, okay. Sorry.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Mireya.
Good evening, my name is Mireya.
Quiero pedirles que hagamos algo lo más pronto posible.
I would like to ask for us to do something as soon as possible.
Porque no necesitamos andarlos buscando. Yo vivo en un lugar donde está enfrente este lugar, hay publicidad.
Because we don't have to be looking for them. I live in a place where there is one right in front of where I live, and publicity is not, there is publicity.
Está cerca de la escuela, del parque.
It's close to the school, close to the park.
Y al lado de una licorería perfecto para ellos.
And it's close, right next to a liquor store, perfect for them.
1,800 de, para una multa es muy poco para lo que ellos están haciendo al día.
1,800 for a fine is very little for what they are making in a day.
Ustedes tienen el poder. El chef de policia, el jefe de policía, queremos que nos ayude.
You guys have the power and we want the chief of police to help us.
Para poder quitar estos dispensarios lo más pronto posible porque dañan a nuestra comunidad.
To take away these dispensaries as soon as possible because they harm our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Carolina Hernandez.
Good evening, my name is Carolina Hernandez.
Estoy aquí por los dispensarios ilegales, que estoy en contra de ellos.
I'm here because of the illegal dispensaries, I'm against them.
Y me gustaría también que este proceso sea agilizarlo lo más pronto posible.
And I would like this process also to be facilitated in a much more quick manner.
Este es un negocio que se necesita licencia, ¿por qué? Si no tienen licencia, ¿por qué nos estamos tardando tanto? Si yo no tengo licencia para hacer impuestos, me cierran mi negocio.
So for a business, you need to have a license. If they don't have a license, why aren't we taking care of it right away? If I don't have a license for doing taxes, they take away the business right away?
Si no tengo para cortar una licencia para cortar pelo, me cierran. Si mi restaurante no pasa la inspección que debe, me cierran mi restaurante inmediatamente. ¿Por qué tiene que ser los dispensarios ilegales? ¿Por qué es seis meses por seis? ¿Por qué es nueve meses? Espero que, por ejemplo, el dispensario que está enfrente de, sobre la Gilbert, perdón, sobre la Highland y la Orange Store, espero que sea uno de los primeros en cerrarse. Para mí, ya está contando el tiempo. Yo no voy a esperar seis, seis o nueve meses desde que ustedes agarren a esa persona. Para mí, ya empezó los seis, ya fue por seis meses.
In regards to closing the dispensaries, it needs to be something that's taken care of right away, not a process of six to nine months. What about the dispensary that's right in front of where I am, Orange Store and Highland? This is not something that needs to take six to nine months, it needs to be dealt with right away.
Eso es todo, gracias.
That's it, thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Cassandra. Buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening, my name is Cassandra. Good evening to everybody.
Yo solamente quería apoyar el programa piloto que trajo la señorita.
I just wanted to support the pilot program that this lady put before us.
Y me gustaría que lo pusieran en la página de la ciudad para poder verlo mejor y estudiarlo un poco.
And I would like for it to be put on the city's website, to be able to be seen better and to study it.
Y a grandes rasgos, lo que miré, que a mí no me pareció un poquito, fueron las multas tan bajas.
And looking at the big picture, what didn't seem right to me was that the fines were so low.
Me gustaría que tuviéramos una, como, que nos comportáramos un poquito más agresivo en las multas con los dueños de los lugares donde se están rentando para las cannabis ilegales.
I would like for us to have a bit more of aggressive behavior in terms of the fines for the people that are renting the illegal cannabis operations.
Así como también para los operadores y dueños de ese tipo de tiendas.
And also in the same way for the operators and owners of these stores.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. Gracias.
Necesito su ayuda.
Okay. Need your help.
Sí, buenas noches, una vez más. Esta vez lo voy a hacer en español porque ese es mi lengua.
So, good evening, I'm going to do this one in Spanish because it's my language.
Primera lengua.
My first language.
Quiero decirles, primero que nada quisiera apoyar a que puedan tener un oficial de códigos de, para que nos ayuden a cerrar estos dispensarios.
First of all, I do want to support that we would have a codes enforcement official to help us, or officer to help us to close these.
No son seguros para nuestras comunidades estos dispensarios. Hay mucho tráfico de mucha gente, de carros, y ellos no están, ellos no les importa venir a destrozar nuestra ciudad, ya que estos dispensarios son ilegales. Ellos lo saben, y ellos saben que ellos pueden hacer lo que quieren.
So these dispensaries are not safe. They bring quite a bit of traffic, people, cars. They don't care about destroying our community. They know that this is illegal and they do whatever they want to.
Entonces tengo unas preguntas para ustedes.
So I do have some questions for you guys.
¿Cuál es el fine que le van a dar al dueño de la propiedad? ¿Cuál es el fine que le van a dar al que renta esa propiedad? Y ¿cuál es el fine que le van a dar al que está vendiendo la droga en esa propiedad?
What is the fine that will be given to the owner of the property, owner of the business? What will the fine be to the person who rents out the property? And what will the fine be to the person who is selling the drugs?
Esas son mis preguntas. Y mi pregunta, mi próxima pregunta, ¿cuál sería una excepción para que se cerraran en cuanto de un día a otro o en una semana? Sería una muerte de una persona, a lo mejor vandalismo, a lo mejor shootings, a lo mejor, ¿cuál sería la razón principal? Una muerte de un niño para que se cerraran esos dispensarios así como de un día para otro?
So those are my questions, and my next question, what would the exception be in terms of closing the dispensary from one day to the next? Would a death be necessary? Vandalism, a shooting, even the death of a child? What is necessary for this to be taken care of and closed right away?
Y yo les agradezco de todo corazón todo el tiempo que han dado en este tema. Les agradecemos nosotros que venimos del sur de Fullerton, pero somos de Fullerton en general. Entonces, amamos nuestra ciudad, amamos nuestros barrios, nuestras familias, nos encanta la policía, ellos hacen un excelente trabajo, siempre lo hacen, y yo les damos nuestro respeto para que ellos sigan, pues, cuidando nuestras familias y nuestras calles.
And so I am so thankful for all of the time that you have dedicated toward this topic. I'm from the south Fullerton, but I'm part of all of Fullerton, and I love our city. And we're thankful for what you do, for the neighborhoods, for the families. We, I'm very grateful for the police, the amazing job that they do. We always have respect for them, and we're grateful for the way that they protect our community and our streets.
Y eso es todo por esta noche, y muchísimas gracias por su atención.
That's all for this evening. Thank you so much for your attention.
We appreciate your comments.
Apreciamos sus comentarios.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Les vengo a pedir, por favor, que apoyen el programa piloto para cerrar los dispensarios ilegales.
I would ask for you to please support the pilot program to close the illegal dispensaries.
Ah, y yo sé que Fullerton tiene problemas económicos.
And I do know that Fullerton has economic problems.
Pero tal vez puedan usar el dinero, parte del dinero que les mandó el gobierno, parece.
But perhaps you could use the money or part of the money that the government sent you.
Por el bienestar de Fullerton, de todos, la juventud.
For the well-being of Fullerton, for all of the youth.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gracias.
And do we have any Zoom comments?
We have one. LL, please unmute.
Hey guys, this is Munish Faris, watch again. I wanted to compliment our Spanish-speaking residents that came up and spoke. All of them were very on point, eloquent. I sincerely hope somebody that speaks better Spanish than I do relays that to them. As somebody who's got a lot of experience with abatement, this fee schedule or fine schedule is way too low. It should be easily five to six times what you guys are proposing. I would look at it this way. Somebody gets pulled over and gets a traffic citation for expired registration and no insurance and no license, their fees are probably going to end up being twice as much as your $1,700 figure or whatever it was, or a crime that doesn't compare to what can be done through an illegal dispensary. Secondly, we really need to be looking at this no less than a place that sells illegal alcohol. If you're selling illegal alcohol, you can be shut down extremely quickly. Six months for repeated violations is just way too long. Secondly, the landowners, I'm not sure what the legal process is or how long that would take to get done. The landlords need to be held accountable concurrently, not after six months of time, but I would like to think in a way that's a lot faster so that the message gets around. Finally, when we're looking at these businesses, they're not residences. So if you're operating an illegal dispensary, and we at least look at it the same way we would as an illegal alcohol business, why is it that utilities can't be shut down? Because these are not residences, we wouldn't be affecting somebody living there. We should make it uncomfortable for people that are providing illegal and illicit goods to the community. With that, I think I pretty much summed up all my points, and I really appreciate, again, the ladies that all came up and spoke before I came up or had the opportunity to speak, they're outstanding.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Yes, please.
I'm going to interpret that real quick.
Sure.
Yeah, so I was giving a compliment to all the ladies who talked in Spanish, that the comments were very well articulated, everything they said, and that they did a great job. Gracias.
Thank you. And with that, no other callers, we can bring the matter back to the council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
For, could you explain to us the fee schedule, why these specific numbers, and also the length of time? Will this program hasten any of this, make it faster to close these? And the last question I have is, I know that there is citation here for landlords or the businesses based on maybe code violations of some sort. How do we establish a code violation when we don't have an ordinance setting those rules?
Okay, to your first question, the fee schedule, that is actually set by the California Government Code, and so we have to follow that fee schedule and adopt it into our ordinance, and that's what we have to follow. Our ordinance does allow, though, however, for us to cite every responsible parties. So the resident that I was asking who would get fined, it would be all three responsible parties, the property owner. It's typically, the business owner is the same as the person renting the site, so we typically just have the two. She was referring to the business owner, the property owner, and then the person leasing. So all three would be liable for issuance of citations. And the way it works, it's progressive, so when they first don't comply, we will start with the 100, and then if confirmed building and safety violations, it's the 130. And then, the initial one is the one where it takes us a little bit more time because we have to provide the due process, and we have to make sure they're receiving it. And we note on there, upon receipt, that they will be subject to daily citations. So it can escalate to 1,800 a day for all responsible parties. And?
So in essence, the fees are set by the state?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Councilmember Jung?
If you don't mind just answering, so the length of time, though, is this, having this program, this pilot program, will it shorten the time period? Will it make it faster to close these businesses or these illegal operations? Or are we still going to be going through the six months to nine months?
I believe that it will shorten it, only because that person will have the dedicated time for staying on top of the research, following social media, staying on top of the property ownership. These lucrative businesses, once we get a hold of them, they'll tend to change the ownership under an LLC, and we have to start over. So it will shorten up that gap because we will have that one person dedicated to just focusing on that.
Right, and to my last point on citing based on building codes or code violations, how do we do that when we don't have codes established for this particular type of business?
When you're referring to building code violations?
Or any, I mean, I don't know what you're going to find.
Well, the code prohibits the use, so they're subject to violating the municipal code, the zoning code, and then the building and safety code is where the higher fines, they're subject to those fines.
Yeah, Mr. Councilmember, that could mean anything, like if they did some tenant improvements, because a lot of times they do, and they're not pulling permits for those tenant improvements, so we can fine them for that.
I see, okay, alright.
And then, if I may, so there's been some questions or statements in the past about, you know, higher fines, and what we believe is that's been for charter cities, because they have the ability to do something. But knowing that the state has been trying to incentivize the legal dispensaries and to disincentivize illegal dispensaries, maybe one of the things that we could do also is through our state advocate, is try to seek on this situation, because I believe it would be a good tool for the state, is to allow cities to increase those fines, double them, triple them, quadruple them, in these cases of going against illegal dispensaries. And so maybe if that's direction also, we would work with our state advocates to seek some type of change in state law.
And a local legislator could certainly carry that item.
Absolutely, if we know any of them, we'll ask them.
Councilmember Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any discussion about cannabis seems to evolve or dissolve in many cases, whether or not people like it or not like it, or agree with it or disagree with it. I find this to be an enforcement issue of our code. If legal dispensaries are as much of a public threat as the community suggests, my assumption would be logically this position would pay for itself. With a projected salary of $10,000 for this year, it would be wise for us to measure its effectiveness and community impact before adding another employee to the city's roster. That said, I would approve of this project as it stands right now, recommended by staff as a pilot program, and I look very forward to measuring the change in real time for the communities that are pleading for help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I'll second it, but if I get a question, oh, on the fines. Where does that money end up? It does end up in our general fund or a specific?
Yeah, it goes back to the general fund.
Okay, so we'll be able to see it, okay. Alright, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, just one quick note on the comment. So there already is an assembly bill under consideration that would allow for even general law cities to increase their citation amount for cannabis enforcement. AB 1138 was introduced by Assemblymember Blanca Rubio, and so it's moving in through the legislative process at the state level. But it would allow, and we've actually been working closely, fairly closely, with the drafters of that legislation, and wanting to make sure that general law cities typically get left out in the cold when it comes to citations, while charter cities have the ability to issue very exorbitantly high fines and citation amounts. And so we've been very cautious with them to make sure that general law cities are incorporated, and they're proposing up to a $30,000 per violation citation amount. So that's very encouraging for us.
Does that include, is that include any cities that don't? Does that include, is that include any cities that don't have or don't allow legal dispensaries?
It would be inclusive whether the city allows or does not allow.
Good to know.
Thank you for that, calling attention to it.
Mr. Mayor, one item, would you like some of the last questions and dialogue between council and staff to be translated really quickly for?
Certainly, yes.
Mr. Mayor, and I would just highlight one of their questions about the fines, who sets them and so forth. That would be a good place to start.
That would be appropriate.
Yeah, I did take some notes just on the conversations. So, just to interpret what was basically said, there were three parts, a question that someone asked, who will receive the fines? There were three parts. I was explaining to the lady, both the property owner and the person renting. Sometimes it's the same person, the owner of the business, and the person renting. But the three parts are responsible. The fines are progressive, it begins with $100. You have to give them the right time, but then it can progress to $1,800 a day. And then there was a question from the manager, Sarah. She was saying if it is possible to extend the time to six months for the dispensary? And she answered, the lady thinks it is possible to have a dedicated person. Some property owners are trying to avoid forming a LLC, but with a dedicated person, we can see progress. Then there was a question from the manager, Silva, Sarah, of how to enforce it. And according to the code, it is prohibited to use in terms of efficiency, building and safety also, and so there are fines for those categories. And then the municipal administration was talking about that. At the state level, there is a tool that allows cities to pay and increase the amount of fines, to multiply, multiply, quadruple. And there are defenders that can work with the local legislators to advocate and improve or increase the fines. Hopefully. And the manager, Jung, said if it is possible, this place can pay for itself. Hopefully, with the $10,000 that are starting to generate funds and achieve a change for the people who are advocating for help. And also, it was talking about that there is a legislative proposal at the level of the Assembly that is called AB 1138, which was introduced by the Assemblymember Blanca Rubio. It is in the process in the Assembly, the legislative process right now. And we are working together with them. That was from the senior Matt, Matt Folks, who shared that. And also, the manager, Silva, asked about the fines. Where is the money? It goes to the general fund. Thank you.
And another thing, the fines, in regards to the fines, it's dictated by what the state says. We cannot lower or raise those amounts. Thanks.
We do have a motion by Mayor Protem Dunlap, seconded by Councilmember Silva. If there is additional comment, seeing none, we're ready for a roll call.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And one last thing, this new position will be aided very much by the eyes and ears of the people who spoke this evening. And so I think that portends well for accelerating this process.
And the last thing, this new place will be assisted by the eyes and ears of the people who spoke this evening. And so I think that portends well for accelerating this process. And the last thing, this new place will be assisted by the eyes and ears of the people who talked today and others. So that will help accelerate the process to be more rapid.
Thank you. And with that, microphone needs to work. With that item, we're at item number 14 on our agenda, which is Parks and Recreation Master Plan Contract Award. That to be presented by Alice Loyah, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director.
Yes, thank you, once again. I do have a PowerPoint presentation for that as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm Alice Loyah, Parks and Recreation. I'm going to start with an overview and demonstrate the need for a Fullerton Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then after that, I'm going to turn it over to Zachary Muting from RJM Design Group, who is going to do another PowerPoint presentation to show you what would be done during the master plan process. So the benefits of a master plan are to help city staff and officials prioritize improvements, identify deficiency, identify park poor areas, and also park poor amenities, and identify the need for non-motorized transportation. And what is meant by that are trails and walkways through the parks. Reevaluate the needs of the community. The master plan process will include surveys of the neighborhoods, the larger communities, stakeholder groups such as youth leagues, schools, Parks and Recreation Commission, and city council. And it also helps evaluating funding sources due to our lack of limited funding. The need for a master plan, one of the more enticing things about living in Fullerton is that we have a lot of open space, park and trail system. You know, we have 53 parks, more than 28 miles trails, and we're getting more. And we've got quite a bit of open space, and we have open space coming up. Fullerton is an older city. It's over 115 years old and nearly built out. A lot of our parks are over 50 years old as well. The older a park system is, the more important it is to have some kind of updated comprehensive master plan. The last master plan that we did was in 1978, so it's a little bit outdated. Since then, the demographics of Fullerton had changed dramatically. Fullerton is more diverse now than it was in 1978. The population and housing in Fullerton plays a big role in determining what the need is, the location for programming, parks and trails, as well as what kind of amenities go into which parks. The community's priorities for programming and park usage have also changed since 1978. We have a lot more demand for field space, and not only more demand for field space, but we have more demand for the types of field space. A master plan would help that. The popularity of mountain biking and hiking is much more than it was in 1978. We also have a lot of people wanting to exercise outdoors, including residents and seniors who are more active than they used to be. With tighter funding, it becomes more important to have a plan in place that they can help direct funding towards the projects and programs that the community wants and needs. In 1997, we had a park inventory assessment created by another firm. Each park and park amenity was rated from very poor to very good condition. We used this plan to identify what park CAP projects we were going to put in the budget. But we exhausted the plan over 10 or 15 years ago. So now we are, you know, there's no plan for us to look at to decide what parks we're going to choose. So the current selection process is rather reactive than proactive. We kind of look at which parks have not been improved in a while. We also identify parks that have amenities that are deteriorating, and we also react on complaints from the community. Or sometimes we choose a park or trail that could qualify for a grant. So a part of the selection process for the master plan, we did an RFP, and seven firms submitted proposals. We put a review team together from Parks and Recreation, Community Development, Public Works, City Manager's Office, and a consultant from Athenian Groups. They scored their master plans based on timeliness, completeness, quality, structure, experience, past success, things like that, that were important to choosing the right firm. The top three firms were invited to an interview where they presented their proposals. The top three firms were RJM Design Group, KTUA, and MIG. RJM was voted number one by all but one person on the review team. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Zachary Muting, and he is going to do a presentation on what you could expect from a Parks and Recreation master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be invited back here tonight. To be honest, this is my first live in-person council meeting since March of 2020. I knew where my jacket was, but it was a surprise to find that I had matching pants to go with it. So what I would like to go through tonight briefly, because I know it is getting late, I want to make sure I answer all of your questions as we go through why a Parks and Recreation master plan, what it is, what it will do, and how it will help the community. The general plan adopted in 2012 states that Fullerton will be a city which supports community health with recreational resources, well-maintained parks, preserved open spaces, and public programs to encourage a healthy lifestyle. An excellent plan and an excellent vision. And what we need to ask ourselves from that is really, how do we proceed from there? So what do we need? Why do we need it? How do we incorporate that vision and bring it to reality? Some of the questions that we look at are what types of recreation facilities and programs does the community of Fullerton want? What types of programs and facilities does the community need? How do we pay for it? And then, which follows, funding for some CIP programs is, how do we continue to maintain it? That's a critical aspect that we look at in pursuit of that vision when we look at this information. Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan is a guide and an implementation tool for the management and development of Parks and Recreation facilities. Some of the facilities, as we just heard, are over 50 years old. They were designed and built for generational needs almost 50 years ago in some cases. Those needs have changed. We work in a lot of built-out communities. This is something that we deal with regularly. We look at the local community needs on a sub-demographic level. So we look at not just the citywide as a whole, but all the sub-neighborhood regions to make sure that any recommendations we look at are surgically placed for the funds that are available. This way, you're not randomly selecting areas, you're not randomly selecting trails or parks for improvements, but based on local community need. It further supports and divides the general plan policies and elements. It offers recommendations to support the local Fullerton community. This is a strategic plan that will help identify how we continue with Parks and Recreation here into the future. Some of the benefits that we'll receive here are physical, social, as well as equity benefits and economic benefits that are built on today's community for today's economy. When we go through this information, I'll go, I'm going to skip some of the detail here as we move through this. But when we look for different homes in different areas where we want to recreate, where we want to live, we look at possible parks, possible transit stops, possible libraries, possible public infrastructure. We look at that property value in a different way. So as parks come up, as community needs come up, and those community needs are met, everybody wins together. The process that we're going to go through to develop the Parks and Recreation master plan will be a 12-month process. It will take five steps to complete, beginning with the inventory of existing conditions, extensive community outreach, a thorough needs analysis, recommendations, and ultimately, the financial strategy plan. Now, when we look at these elements, we want to make sure that we're addressing how many of what type of parks programs we have in Fullerton. Do we need more parks and programs? Can we afford the parks and programs we have now? We look at all these questions, and we ask ourselves, how do we find the answers to these? By utilizing the GIS systems that we have, as well as the community's capabilities, we overlay the tapestry information, the demographics of the community, with your existing information that you have. We quantify passive and active parks, we evaluate the programs, and then we evaluate the distribution and service analysis. Does everybody have access to a park? Where are there park poor areas? How can we start to fill in those gaps? When we do that, we look at those park types, what park types exist, what the distribution is, the park condition, the level of service, and then there are any park competitions. Park competition might be private enterprises, county park facilities, other facilities that possibly offer recreation amenities, to look at potential PPP, public-private partnerships, as we develop different opportunities for the city to continue the Parks and Recreation. When we go to the community outreach portion of the project, we want to look at who is the community? Where do they live? Where do they recreate? How do they recreate? What do they want? What do they need? Through six different components, such as the demographic assessment, not just, again, on a citywide level, but on a sub-neighborhood tapestry level, we dive into each individual community, each individual neighborhood, to understand the people, to understand their needs and their local desires for recreation components. We develop our outreach around a project website, a centralized portal for anybody to participate at any point in time. We have multiple virtual town hall meetings and online surveys. We do a sports organization survey to quite literally count cleats on feet, as well as stakeholder interviews, and then a multimodal online, as well as telephone survey to capture that community voice, and then to build information that will start to identify those local needs.
If I may, just a quick interruption here. When you were saying outreach and three town halls, how would you advertise those? And I know we have 53 parks, each one with different needs and communities. So how would you be able to reach out to different neighborhoods with different needs?
I'm glad you asked, because I'm going to touch on that right here. When we do that, we've become an online on-demand generation. Now, not everybody has access to online resources, so we do take that into account. But initially, what we do is we start with our social platforms. We look at the 24/7 live Facebook feeds, we look at the city apps, we look at the city websites. We do a lot of posting, we buy Facebook ads, so that way we can identify to the entire community the web portal. And then anytime we go out and we look at the information we're getting in, it's all geo-tracked. So I know if we're getting an equitable cross-distribution in the entire community from a geography standpoint, not just a demographic standpoint, and if there are gaps, we're able to zero in and make sure we collect information on that. So it's a twofold system. We advertise the information, the website's live, and then we track information coming in. If there are any gaps that we start to see, we go back out and refocus advertising in those areas to make sure we get a good cross-section of the community. Because our data is not, is not complete if we're only capturing one part of the community. We need the entire city as a whole. That's one of the core concepts that we do, particularly with the website. The online web presence has been a game changer. We've actually seen during COVID, a dramatic increase in public participation just because a lot of people are now on-demand. Our schedules have actually changed quite a bit. They might not be able to make an evening workshop, but they can make an online video. They can make an online survey. They can get the telephone or the texting survey that we offer. So there are a lot of opportunities to participate at any point in time for those 12 months for people that have access to online resources. If they don't, we also have paper surveys that we can offer at different community centers or as well as City Hall here, so people can access that information too, turn it back into staff. As we go through this, we want to make sure that we don't leave anybody behind. So when we do this online presence, we really focus it for the entire life of the project, not just for a one-month window or a two-week window, but it's the entire process. So anybody can take part at any point in time. I had mentioned the sports organization. One of the critical aspects, one of the largest users of land are the smallest groups of sports teams. We want to make sure that we're accurately projecting new sports facilities as we emerge from COVID here. Everybody's going to come back. What does that look like? Does that mean we have all the sports facilities we need? Do we need less? Do we need to change? What do they turn into as we start to evolve here, coming out of COVID? And just making sure that we're actually providing for some of those needs from the sports organizations. Our process quite literally counts cleats on feet. I talk about how many players there are, how many times teams play, and what that organization needs, so we can project specific information as we go through the analysis. That's important because accurate field allocation yields accurate costs. In a recent study that we did for a community, we looked at their actual sports facility needs on one image here. I'm looking at soccer. They had a local community demand for 14 fields, and an average cost of $300,000 for a basic field. You're looking at $4.2 million. Well, if we use national standards, that would have turned into 21 fields, which was an over-expense of $2.1 million, add on maintenance onto that for the life of those facilities. So knowing exactly how many we need is critical as we move forward. An additional element of our outreach will focus in on stakeholder interviews and focus groups, working with staff. We will meet with community leaders and special interest groups, community organizers, to make sure that we get their information as well, some of those frontline community leaders, and we hear from them as we go through the process. Simple surveys are not enough. We also need boots on the ground to make sure we hear from every constituent available. I'm going to skip through a couple of these. I'm gonna skip through a couple of these technical slides, just because I don't want to take up too much of your time. But when we do start to collect all of our information, I want to touch on how we compile it. I take the stakeholder interviews, the virtual workshop data, the direct survey data, all the geo-referencing, and then I compile it all together. And when I do that, I want to make sure that I'm getting the maximum community impact through community prioritized recommendations. Not just professional recommendations, but what is the community looking for first? And we accurately determine, based on that information, how many recreation facilities of what type, and when they're needed, where they're needed as well, by those residents. And take all that information, which sounds somewhat complicated, we put it into a very complex chart and matrix where we evaluate everything together, and then turn it into simple, easy-to-read graphics. I'm gonna zoom in on this last graphic here, to just show simply, at the end of the process, we can identify everything we've heard, and where that community impact might be. So that way, all of the recommendations from the community get to be, get to be weighted into one final graphic. So that way, we can see where improvements can be picked up, where those maximum community impacts can be made, whether it's through playground rehabs, trail improvements, and the like. We can identify where they're needed through the community. And this is just an example of that chart, kind of at the end of this, where we look at everything. We take the prioritized recommendations and include all the other needs and wants of the community. So you have a global view of community recreation desires. More importantly, when we put these recommendations together, they're based on our geo-referenced information. So I don't come back and say, you need playgrounds. I come back and say, you need three playgrounds, and these are the three parks that we've heard most. This is their condition. This is their lifespan. This is how you might be able to rehabilitate them without completely remodeling them. Might just need some improvements, based on what we hear from the community, based on our field analysis. We go through recommendations, specific to programs and service recommendations, park and facility recommendations, as well as maintenance recommendations, to give you an overview snapshot of the entire recreation component throughout the city. And I'm just gonna touch on very briefly a couple of those recommendations, and the maintenance aspect, looking at soil testing, making sure that the plant material has healthy, vigor growth, so that's not just constantly replacing material, but maintaining some of the soil characteristics, making sure there's no irrigation overspray, which irrigation overspray starts to deteriorate roads and parking lots. Simply controlling some of those elements, looking at the park landscaping elements, possible turf reduction. I know we're in a drought condition now, making sure that we put active turf where active turf needs to be, and preserving passive turf, turf where it needs to be, but eliminating potential turf we don't need. Playground. Looking at those playgrounds, we also consider those in the sub-demographic region neighborhoods, seeing if those playgrounds are still needed, where playgrounds are needed most. And then look, talking about sports information, synthetic fields, sports courts, and lighting, all play into how many sports facilities do we need here in Fullerton? How many do we need going forward? Are there certain programs that are growing? Are there certain programs that are shrinking? We can accurately predict those sports facility needs as we come out of COVID here. And then, as we come to the end of the process, with all that information at hand, we start to look at the funding sources. Funding, we break it down into two components, funding for parks and recreation recommendations specific, as well as current and projected capital project costs. I won't go through each of these elements specifically, but we do look a number of different funding sources that could be viable as we start to provide the recommendations. But more importantly, as we take these funding sources and we tie them to each of our recommendations. So if something comes up and you decide to go for trails or park components, you'll have funding recommendations tied exactly to those recommendations, and you can move forward with exact information on how to start to fund some of this, these projects as we move forward. I'm gonna skip through some of these last slides here, because I want to end with that general plan statement again, that in order to support the general plan statement of Fullerton will be a city which supports the community health with recreational resources, well-maintained parks, preserved open spaces, and public programs to encourage healthy lifestyles. In short, following that, we will develop a community-based needs analysis, supported by assessing the financial needs, the local community needs, as well as funding opportunities, to create a clear roadmap for surgical improvements where needed over the next five, 10, 15 years into the future. With that, I'm here to take any questions you may have. I would like to note, very impressed with your ability to, staff's ability to handle, handle online, in-person, and all the communication. I've, I've been seeing that a lot lately for the last year, and I'll tell you, Fullerton has really nailed it. So it's, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a question. If you may, I know there's an arts component, component that's been suggested as well, would, and I know that we are a community of the arts, and, and it's very important to our community. Could you elaborate on what you would do here with this?
Yes. So we, we did outline some of the information in our proposals, but Rick Stein from Arts Orange County is on our team for that. He has worked within the community. And really, when we look at the cultural component, the art component, our cultural community fabric is really preserved and celebrated in the arts. It's who we are. It carries from community to community. It varies from community to community. We'll look at trying to save what we have left here in Fullerton, and make sure that it's preserved for generations to come. And that, that process will actually follow quite a bit of what I had identified earlier through significant community, community outreach, working with key stakeholders within the community, working with the local art locations, making sure that the same analysis is done on the arts within the city here of Fullerton, and how we can fund, how we can program, and how we can pervert, preserve those components as we go forward. Very similar to how we handle the park recommendation needs.
For example, I mean, we, our museum struggles with sustainability, and I'm wondering if that would be a, a component that you, you can maybe provide some information on funding, or, or take a look at that as part of this? Is that, is that part of the plan?
That is. That is, absolutely. We look at possible funding sources for potential public-private partnerships, as well as how we can continue to support that specific element. That was something that Richard Stein from Arts OC brought up specifically.
Any other questions by council at this point?
You know, I've got one question actually for Ms. Loy or, or Mr. Domer, and that would be, how many employees do we have within the Parks and Rec Department?
We currently have 14 full-time staff and about 20 part-time staff. We used to have 21 full-time staff and 125 part-time staff.
Thanks. You know, if I, if I could make a few comments?
Certainly, yeah.
I, I think it's interesting that we're seeing this on the agenda tonight, considering the Parks and Rec. And Zach, I just want to say, this comment or criticism is not directed at you. But, you know, I think it's interesting that our Parks and Rec Commission unanimously voted to reject this proposal, and somehow, it found its way to the council. And I think what's interesting, a lot of what we've seen in this plan, you know, Fullerton is the education city, but we might as well become the survey city, considering we put out so many surveys to residents and, and stakeholders. And I think at some point, you know, in the financial world, they call it analysis paralysis, where, you know, you're constantly tripping over your research and, you know, the, the work that you're doing, and it, and it becomes an impediment and prevents you from actually getting things done. And I think that's what really concerns me this evening, because, you know, we're all aware of the financial, you know, situation the city is in. And we've even talked about earlier on, in some of the comments that were made, and we talked about the need for funding for the museum center, or the need to improve some of these other resources that we have. And quite honestly, these funds could be used for that, that purpose. And so I think, you know, I think it was item number two on the consent calendar that we voted on earlier this evening, we actually agreed to expand, not only expand the positions on some of the count, the committees and the commissions, you know, but to, to add to those as well. And so I think it really sends a mixed message when you have a group who has done the, the research and the vetting of a proposal that our Parks and Rec Commission has, where they actually decide that they want to reject it, and instead, it kind of leapfrogs to the council. And so, you know, this evening, I am prepared to make a motion to, you know, reject this item, because I think, really, we talked about the number of employees. I think there were 14 full-time now, 20 part-time. Obviously, through the pandemic, before the departure of former Director Curial, had about 15 full-time. With only 53 parks, you know, they could have divided and conquered, and at least started with some sort of an initial internal analysis of the existing park conditions. Would I expect that to be as robust as the one that we're paying, you know, your company for? Absolutely not. But I think it's a starting point. And so often here at City Hall, you know, we see this interest in contracting out immediately, you know, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on reports and on consultants, instead of actually digging in and getting the work done, so that we can actually get things done. And I think that's what's most important for Fullerton residents. So I won't be supporting this, this evening, and in fact, I'm prepared, I would like to move that we reject this item.
Councilmember John?
Mr. Mayor, if, with a near $30,000 price tag, of which $50,000 comes out of our city's general fund, on an item that was already unanimously voted down by our Parks and Recations Commission at that level, park dwelling fees are meant for the creation of open space, and it escapes me now how a master plan will assist us in creating any more of it. It exists to improve our parks, of which we have so many that require improvement and better management. And I would concur with the Mayor Pro Tem that are, we have plenty of qualified staff in our city, Parks and Rec staff, and I have great faith in their capacity to provide analysis and inventory on our parks and trails. There is nothing in this plan that requires a consultant to better define that our amazing Parks and Rec Recreation staff can do on their own with good leadership. We have very enthusiastically and very diligent Parks and Rec Department staff, and I'm confident with, with their ability to provide this information to us accordingly. And with that, I will second the Mayor Pro Tem's motion to deny it.
Councilmember Zabra?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Question, I have a question to our staff. Couple of questions, actually. Alice, if you don't mind.
Yes, thank you.
The first question is, the, the funds here, I know that the $50,000 will come out of the, the, the general fund on the arts component, but in general, this is coming out of our park dwelling fees. Would, without, if, if we don't spend the money on this tonight, what would be, be, be able to use this, these funds for? So that's the first question. And then second question is, do you have the capacity? You are ineffective, effectively in charge of the department right now, because we don't have a, any, a director currently. Do you see, have the ability to put together a comprehensive plan? Because this is not just a survey. A survey is a component of it, just to find out what the community needs are. But, but this is broader than that. This is actually identifying what the needs are and looking at a master plan, which we haven't had since 1978. So do you, do you see yourself being able, or your staff being able to do this?
Well, let me start with answering the first question on park dwelling funds. Park dwelling funds can only be used for park improvements and park acquisition, and a master plan would follow under the, the eligibility, because it is a, a plan to figure out how to acquire park space or to improve park space. So it is eligible for that. If we weren't using it on a master plan, we would use the same way, either towards park improvements or park acquisition. As far as, do we have the capacity with the amount of staff that we have in Parks and Recreation right now? No, we do, it is true that we have a lot of very talented staff, but there are very few of us left, and we are busy doing a lot of the programming. So it is helpful for us to have a consultant that can do this professionally and put a plan together, so throughout the years, we can have something to look at and figure out, where are we gonna put our park dwelling money? Which parks to improve? What does the community need? So yes, we, we don't have the staff, the, the capacity with the staff remaining. It's not so much that the staff is incapable, it's there's not enough of us, and some of this work is very specific to professional consultants, such as the surveying and the GIS mapping.
Right. No, thank you. And I, I think that, you know, our, our parks, somebody told me, are in a mess. It's not my own words, it's a member of the community, are a mess. And, and, you know, I think as, as a local government, we are responsible for proper planning. And if we ought to organize and properly maintain our facilities, understand what we have, and then start looking at, at the next 50 years of Fulton Parks, I think we do need a plan. We can't, you can't operate without a plan. Otherwise, what, I'm not sure what would we be doing, haphazardly sort of identifying things, which is what we have been doing. This is a very reactive approach that we've had, and I, I think having plans would be a proactive approach. So I am supportive of this tonight.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, thank you. You know, one of the things that I, that I didn't know of, or I didn't really get until today, was the, the geo-tracking, the GIS. Do we have in the city an expert in this GIS geo-tracking, where we can layer on maps, different information?
We, we used to, and we've lost to in the last three months, most recently, within the last two weeks. And so we are lacking in that capacity, so.
Thank you, because that, that was a great interest to me, because I, one of the things that, that we've been advocating for is more open space and improvements in South Fullerton. And to talk about reactionary, I recall when these ladies right here were the same ones that were really advocating for Woodcrest Park, and we finally got it done. But, but because there was no plan to when and how, it was the constant lobbying and advocacy that we got it done. The same thing with Pacific Park, the improvements, that there was no plan, but because of the community, they came in, were advocating for it, and we were able to put it together and get that done. The same for Rolling Hills, the one that's gonna be, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting, same thing, that the community came in and said, the, the playground is being broken, and we had to go in there and start to react to it. And going a little farther back, I remember Richmond Park, back in, I think in 2010, when, you know, speaking about the different needs, when the soccer, a different soc, well, not a different, but another soccer group got big in Fullerton, and there was no fields for them to practice, and it was a big push to put lights at Richmond Park. And again, there was no plan for it. It was just, again, the community coming to council and saying, we, we need this, we need that, and, and it was put together and done. But it's all been reactionary. And, and even so, the, the soccer club that was there, or the group, got a little bit of Richmond Park, and got a little bit of Orange Thorpe, and then the majority of their league had to practice in Anaheim, Buena Park. And, and the Community Soccer League is still going, and a lot of my students at Nicholas play in that. But if you ask them where they practice, they practice in Anaheim, Buena Park, and Placentia, because they couldn't get fields here. And again, and then, coming a little further, I know when the, the Fullerton Bears needed a space, you know, we were able to get them some space. Well, we, it's at the county and us, because of, of the county being involved, but there was no plan to figure out what other sports are coming up. Like, I know currently, we have a big, well, not currently, but the last few years, we had a big push for rugby, and we've had to adjust to that. Okay, how do we do rugby fields? And I understand, I think Mr. Councilmember John said that lacrosse is coming up, and I have seen a couple of asks for lacrosse. So I think a plan would help us be proactive versus reactive. And I especially like the fact that we can do the geo-tracking and the geo-layering, because I think that does tell us, where are the poor park communities, what, what part of our community in socioeconomics and demographics is getting the benefits of the city parks? And I know that I, when we talked about Coyote Hills Park, park dwelling fees, you know, when that gets developed, all those, you know, hundreds of houses up there, all that park dwellings are already going to the north part of Fullerton. None of that park dwelling fees from Coyote Hills is coming down to South Fullerton, where, where the poor park communities are. How do we plan for that? If we've got other developments, you know, park dwelling fees come from housing being built. There hasn't been a lot of housing. The last big housing was Red Oak, and we've got those funds. How are they being allocated? Where are they going? And just from being around in Parks and Rec, and in City Council, and before that, advocating for the South Fullerton residents as a teacher, it was always come to council and fight for it, ask for it, push for it. And, but, you know, as I'm thinking of, there was never a plan to say, well, we got this one here, this one's next, that one's next. And circling back to Richmond, when we, they next. And circling back to Richmond, when we, they, when the community there did get the lights, there was a big push, well, if we were fighting for those lights, why is baseball and football coming in here when we need it for soccer purposes? And one of the great things about Fullerton, that there are locker, a lot of sports teams, sports leagues. We've got, you know, I think the Fullerton Titans and the Bears in football. We've got the Community Soccer League and the Rangers in soccer. We've got West, East, Golden Hill, Little Leagues, Pony, well, we have Pony, they went out. We've got the, again, the rugby and perhaps lacrosse. So again, I would, you know, not sure how I was going to look at this tonight. I think just based on what we can do with those geo-layers. And that may also help us pinpoint other deficiencies in our city where we can say, hey, this area here is park poor, space poor, let's figure something out. I know that the Valencia community has wanted a community center out there. They've been asking for that, looking to see if they can get something. But, you know, there's nothing there. I know that the Gem District, we've got that community center there, and now we have a park, but it's not open. I know that down in the Gilbert area, down, well, in Gilbert and south of Orange Thorpe, I've been there visiting students and knocking on doors many times. And there's a need to improve some of that area there. And perhaps this can pinpoint it down and say, here's what's missing, what would make a difference there. So like I said, I wasn't sure where it was going. But based on those reasons, I think we do need a plan. We need a guy to say, this is where it's needed. And I have no doubt that our staff can put something together, but I don't know if it'll be as comprehensive with the geo-layers. And I don't know if we can get something done in 12 months, because we're short-staffed and we don't have some of the expertise. So, and again, and I know that 236,000 from park dwelling, I don't, that couldn't be spent on the museum, correct? Or can we use it? We can't use it there? So it's got to go for something with the park improvements or purchase. So I, you know, unfortunately, we may have a split council here. But I'm ready to look at this and maybe learn more from this, other than just what parks we need. Because I think we can take that layering of the geo-track and the data, and use it to see what other things, what other areas are we missing in, what's needed, what's not needed, and help us be a little more efficient. So I would say, I would like to see if we can move on this and get something going. And give us a plan.
Councilman Silva, would you entertain a substitute motion to approve staff recommendation?
I would move to move the item. And if we need to, we can leave the art, the art component out until we figure that out. But I would definitely be in support of moving this item and getting as a guide a plan to see how we can address, so that we don't have our community leaders coming up to them saying, hey, what about this park over here? What's going on? And so we can probably provide them some services, some areas of needs before they come here and demanding. We can say, here it is, it's coming. So I would move the item, you know.
There is a motion, I think, I believe, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to, I'd offer a substitute motion to approve staff recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, sir, right before we go to take that vote.
Well, we haven't heard from the public yet either. And I will withhold my comments on that. But Councilmember Silva, sometimes we're concerned about the length of our council meetings, and we could perhaps shorten our comments on occasion. And I mean that kindly.
Is that said to everyone, or just me?
Well, to whomever is giving us the entire history or something. Yes, I would want you to tell me that. I would want you to tell me that.
I typically keep them short. I think this is the first time in a long while that I've rambled on, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be, I'll be very brief to avoid elongating this meeting any more than we have to. First and foremost, with regards to the Fullerton Bears and their needing field, city had nothing to do with that. Fullerton Bears advocated the county and our supervisor at the time, Sean Nelson. And he, at the direction of, with the rest of the supervisors, renovated Clark Park to the condition that it's in now, where it is usable, which wasn't, sat there for five years in dilapidated condition. So let's not say the city got involved, because that's a county park, sir, one. And two, if we're talking about being proactive, when the Parks Department had over 100-plus employees, we could have been proactive and done this study. The fact that now, all of a sudden, we don't have those employees anymore, and we've got a staff shortage, so we can't do this, doesn't wash with me. So again, I've got a motion on the table, sir, that I've to deny this. And I'll look forward to public comments accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And just on that note, I recall Supervisor Nelson calling me and asking me to help move it so that the city can work with the county to facilitate that. So the Supervisor Nelson called me specifically for that. So, you know, that's where I was coming from.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, real quickly, and I won't add too much to it, but I just wanted to address the comment about why is it here at the city council when the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yes, I do have concerns about that myself.
Well, the Parks and Recreation Commission is an advisory body to the city council. And their recommendation on this was 4-0 to not go forward with it, to deny it. But the city council is the final determination. You're the decision-making body. I brought it back to you because, again, staff, as you have heard from the staff report, we believe this is a critical component to what we want to go forward. The 236 or $38,000, yes, is a lot. But what I see, and I am a, I believe I'm a conservative budgeter and, you know, try to be very, very efficient with taxpayer money, is the way we kind of muddle through the process currently, we'll waste that amount of money without this type of planning that helps us pinpoint directly. So I just want to let you know, that is why I brought it back. The city council is the final determination. If it goes down, it goes down, it won't come back.
And with that, I'll withhold my comments, at least until after we hear from any members of the public who wish to address this item.
Good evening, Elsa Miranda, one more time. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking on this item. First of all, this reminds me of the potholes that we always struggle on the streets. What do we do? We spend money on covering them up, and then later on, you'll see rocks, and then they start, you know, hurting the vehicles, the rims, and causes more damage, right? So right now, we, you guys laid off 153 part-time employees from the Parks and Recreation, 153. So now you're trying to spend money, to be exact, 236,295.
288 with the arts component, yes.
Plus, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. So now you're trying to spend that money instead of hiring more Parks and Recs that will cover for any losses that the city has right now. So instead of maybe helping what has been, you know, missing, or what has been doing wrong, we're trying to add more to the deficit, add more to the problem. And I really, really love the idea. I mean, don't get me wrong, I love the idea, because that's what we're being asking for. Whatever, everything you presented tonight, we've been asking. So everything, your presentation is great, everything's great. I loved it. If we could use some of this, what you said, the number, into the community, into the input of the community, and instead of maybe hiring people to tell you what to do, just invest it in the community. It will be a lot easier. And I, Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap, he's kind of like the, I appreciate you, because you're like our voice. You're our voice. And that's what we want. We want those funds to be applied into the programs, like the golf, like programs of, I don't know, basketball, and you name it, prevention, drug prevention. Please use those funds wisely. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Good evening, city council members and mayor. I would like to share on that topic. Being, it is expensive. It does sound kind of expensive. However, I think nobody's wrong here. You all have input on it, and I do think that both sides are correct. I live on the south side of Fullerton. I live on West Trustlow Street. There has been a park that's been closed for 23 years. That'll be the next agenda number 15. And so keeping that in mind as well, hopefully you guys can make a better decision on this topic before you close it completely, and maybe work together on a solution, maybe what other cities do. Maybe this is a good idea, maybe it's not a good idea, but it is expensive. And that's what I'd like to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kurt Johnston. I grew up in Fullerton, and I'm out on the bike trails a lot, you know, all over the place. And I was surprised tonight when I heard how many people are employed on the Parks and Recreation Committee, because I can't ever remember seeing any of them out there doing any work. But I could see, or even seeing them out there too much at all, maybe just driving by. But I could see projects, it's very frustrating, because I could see projects in the parks that need fixing. And I feel like the problem could be corrected just by fixing one problem at a time. Like, there's simple projects, like for instance, Hillcrest Park, the road that you drive through, there's wooden rails that are just like rotted. And what does that take? Some wood and a drill and, you know, a team to do it. So I would like to see, just to start fixing these small projects one at a time. And the parks will start to look, you know, good after a while.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I, my name is Maureen Milton. I always forget to say that. And I've been here 53 years, as of April 1st. The questions I have, may I ask the gentleman that gave the presentation a rather personal question? And I need two answers.
You need to direct to the council, but I'm sure that he will hear what you're saying.
Okay. My first question is, does he have anyone in his family that he is close to that is mobily challenged? And the second question is, how many, or do you have any mobily challenged people on your staff? The reason why I ask this is because we also have a right to go to the parks. And we can't go everywhere, I realize that, but we could at least go and enjoy the parks. And the thing of it is, if you don't have somebody that's mobily challenged, or contract somebody that is mobily challenged, both on a walker and in a wheelchair, how is it going to be available for the mobily challenged? There are too many places that don't have anything for the mobily challenged. There are restrooms, unless they've changed, in the parks that have no handicapped restroom in it. So as I say, I haven't been to a park for a long time for that reason. And that's what I'm wondering, is if you don't take care of my kind, that's leaving a segment of the population out of the picture. And it's so easy, it's much easier to do in the beginning than having to do it after the park is finished. Thank you so very much, whatever you consider, I, and whatever company you consider, I hope that they do have handicapped people either contracted or employed. So, because ADA, that's a lot of hot air. And ADA doesn't change their laws all the time either. So it needs to be updated constantly. So thank you so very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to bring two items to your attention regarding this topic. The first being in 2019, some of the residents actually that are here tonight, and I did a community survey of the parks that we were able to access. And so just the results and summaries of that survey just kind of hint at some of the amenities and some of the priorities that, you know, some members of the community want. So I definitely want that to be considered regardless of what decision you make tonight. And second, in terms of being able to give a public comment on this, I really appreciate all your deliberation and just the multiple choices that we have to whether, to give comment on Zoom, or in person, or e-comment, et cetera, because other cities don't do that. And it's actually a huge privilege that we have as Fullerton constituents to be able to do that. But I just want to caution that please continue to listen to public comment before making motions, because I got a little concerned, there was a bit of a rush to make substitute motions and motions. And I was just like, whoa, we're sitting right here, and we're waiting to make a public comment, because this impacts us for the next decade or so. A lot of the community trust in developing new parks and fixing up our parks was broken from previous decisions in the past that, you know, we had to lobby for how many years? How many years did we lobby on Woodcrest? Like, eight? Trying to get that renovation? And it shouldn't be that way for every park. So I get the need for plans, but also, like, there's just, we need to rebuild the trust in the community and work on some park improvements that are tangible. I mean, we know Pacific Drive needs to come up this year. That was promised to us for many years from the previous Parks Administration. Emory Park is just, you know, it's sad to see that. I mean, residents are complaining about that all the time. So I know that we want a plan, comprehensive, but we need to build trust with specific projects that show we're committed to this community, and we're open and listening to this community, not just, you know, going straight to the most expensive consultant every time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers in council chambers, how are we on Zoom comments?
We have three Zoom commenters. LL, please unmute. LL, please unmute.
Hi, this is Munish again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. Hey, I was lucky enough to sit in on the Parks and Rec meeting, or Commission meeting where this conversation took place. And solid representation there from different parts of the community, that all felt that this was not a proper expenditure of funds. We recently relieved or fired a Parks and Rec Director. And now it seems that we want to spend about the same amount of money to hire a consultant. One of the things that the consultant opened with, and none of these things are meant as a put-down on the consultant at all, was if they're going to create ratings for parks and needs and whatnot. Those are pretty fairly easy to get on your own and to decipher. So staff really has been cut down drastically. But a lot of the things that he was saying are things that staff should be doing. After all, they've got the institutional knowledge, they've got the tribal knowledge, they've got the practical knowledge. During the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, all of these things were discussed. And one of the things that came up was, oh, we're going to get grants, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. A lot of those things are promises made when a sale is made. There's almost no way to really ensure that those things happen. Furthermore, how are we going to pay for the plans that this proposal may come up with? If they say we need to renovate any park, where's that money coming from? I would also suggest asking the Parks and Rec Commission why they unanimously voted down this entire proposal. Me personally, having been involved with View Sports and whatnot for over 10 years, I have faith in our Parks and Rec Commission, but I also believe in our Parks and Rec staff. I've had I've had more than enough dealings to see how creative they are, how concerned they are, and just how reasonable they usually are in wanting to address the needs of our community. Spending a few hundred thousand dollars or a couple hundred thousand dollars is not going to be building more trust or somehow utilizing our in-house talent better. After all, why are we firing a director but then hiring a private company with honestly literally no accountability back to the city? If our staff are not capable of doing these things, then maybe that's the real issue that needs to be addressed. Are there people that should have been able to do this, or are we not giving them enough tools or enough personnel to be able to do that? Consultants cannot take the place of quality staff. I'll go ahead and tell you guys just from a, a very minor review of what goes on in Parks and Rec, what we need. We need infrastructure to be repaired or replaced. We need grass that is too tall to be cut. We need brown spots to actually be covered and so there's sprinklers covering them so that we can have grass. We need scheduling of sports user groups so that we're able to overlay things in a way that makes practical sense. Let's deal with the homelessness that are rampant in a lot of our parks. There's a whole host of employees I could name off that I know are very intimate with these issues that are being faced by our community.
And that's your three minutes.
I don't think we need to spend a few hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Damian Lloyd, please unmute.
Okay, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Good evening, Council, Damian Lloyd, and I'm a 30-year resident, current member of Parks and Rec Commission. The city manager continuing to willfully ignore recommendations by city commissions and simply baffling, and is the reason we're hearing this Parks Master Plan presentation for the third time. Mr. Domer did the exact same thing before by ignoring infrastructure's unanimous recommendation for a special tax to fix our roads, and look how that turned out. Every commissioner and city council member lives in Fullerton, so I ask this, who has the best interests of our city at heart? Residents and volunteers who live here, who have a vested interest in Fullerton and its future, or a city manager who doesn't live in Fullerton but who does collect every single month $20,000 in salary from our city? The problem with this item tonight is the fact that the presentation is dated November 6th, 2020, three days before the last Parks and Rec Commission meeting on November 9th, 2020. While ex-Parks Director Curial may have mentioned the Parks Master Plan to the previous commission, it was never agendized, mentioned perhaps, but never agendized. If everything about this plan was on the up and up, why wasn't such an important item agendized and the public invited to participate? As you know, at our first meeting, we postponed the item because we were not comfortable with the plan and how it felt so rushed. Additionally, none of us felt we had enough information to make an informed decision. In our second meeting, we listened to the whole presentation as a, and as a body, felt the project was not warranted at this time, especially since the city is in such dire financial straits. Our vote was four to zero against this plan. It won't look good tonight to allocate spending roughly $250,000 when the museum is still closed. And let's not get into the weeds of which pot this money is coming from. A quarter million dollars is exactly that, a quarter million dollars, which incidentally was too much money to hold a special election back in January of 2019 for the vacated at-large city council seat, which would have been the most democratic thing to do for the entire city of Fullerton. To the best of my knowledge, at no point did this Parks Master Plan ever come before the Parks and Rec Commission for discussion or approval before it was released forbid. That's just wrong and as opaque as a process can be. This does not sit well with members of the public or Parks and Recs Committee, and this item must be rejected tonight and the process restarted with all stakeholders and commissioners involved in the scoring process. I know you'll side with your Parks Commission and make the right choice tonight with your vote. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional callers?
Yes, we have two more. Eric, please unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and members of council. I'm Eric Wayne, currently serving as Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I'm here to speak against approval of spending $290,000 of Parks money for a master plan. I'm not opposed to Mr. Domer bypassing the Parks Recreation Commission's unanimous decision to not recommend this $290,000 master plan, but I am disappointed to see in Agenda Item 11, it mentions Parks and Rec Commission recommended approval in the agenda description. Item 12, they mentioned in RAC recommended approval in their agenda description. On the item at hand, Item 14, Commission's unanimous decision to not recommend this master plan isn't found in the description and it's buried in the supporting document. So I'm here to make sure it's understood, Commission listened closely to the proposal, requested more information, listened to the four public commenters who all spoke against recommending the item, and we voted to not recommend this. $230,000 of that money would come out of the park dwelling fund that is to be used for park repairs, improvements, and rehabilitations. I don't bring this up to allude that this would be illegal, as that's obviously not the case. I bring it up to clarify that this is money that is specifically earmarked towards repairing parks and taking money from that fund for a master plan that is completely unnecessary is that much more of a disservice. Thanks, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Caller Andy in 631, please unmute. Press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Hello, my name is Josio Lopez here again, and I would like to make a comment also about the planning of spending $290,000 on a plan that is going to be an idea, again, put on paper, that I would really like the members of the council to think about that and to put it to work instead of hiring a company or a, a group of people that will just give you the idea, the basic idea that you already have and that you can come together and talk about that and make it to work, put it to work. And that's why we are here too, the residents. One of, one of the other people talk about volunteers. Who's the more interested in the well-being of Fullerton and the, the, in these parks and recreation? The volunteers and residents. You can, you can use the people that are, that is here in Fullerton to serve the community. We are here to help also, to help you and help our city to, to be, to become better, to look better and to be better from the roots, not only the outside also. So we are here to help take advantage of that opportunity for us to volunteer and to become proactive instead of reactive, as some of the members of the council have said, and really put it to work, not only words, but work. So yes, I don't agree, and I, I mean, I'm against this proposal for a plan that you already have the idea, you already have the basics. And as one of the council members mentioned also, this plan has been on the table or has been on the, put on hold for five years or more than five years. And now you're more interested, some of the members are interested on this plan that is going to be the basic idea again. So I would really kindly ask you to think about that and probably get ideas from the neighboring cities that they have been doing good and how they're doing it. And, you know, we can ask our neighbors for better idea in the way they were doing it instead of spending money that is not needed to be spent. And that's my comment. Thank you very much for listening and have a great night.
Thank you.
We do not have any other callers.
Okay, with that, we'll bring the item back to council. And just a bit of housekeeping here. Madam Clerk, what are you showing as far as the motions and seconds at this point?
I believe we have a motion from Dunlap, no, Jung, seconded by Dunlap, or is it the other way around? Now I can't read my notes. Dunlap by Jung, there. Sorry, I gotta scribble better, to reject the item. And there is also a substitute motion made by Councilmember Zara to approve the item. There's not been a second yet.
That was what I thought, actually.
I'll second that item.
Anything, can I make just a second substitute motion to reject the item, or do we have to, how does that work?
We have to.
No, we can proceed with, I mean, actually that earlier motion should have died at this stage without that second, but I don't want to block anyone's ability to, to express themselves, so certainly.
And just to clarify on the substitute motion, was that to approve just the agreement or the agreement and the optional arts component?
Was, was staff recommendations with the arts component.
Okay.
But I thought the secondor wanted to leave that out.
Well, I'll, I'll approve his motion, just as is, and then, yeah.
Well, I guess finally I get an opportunity to, to weigh in on this a little bit, which really appreciate a lot of the comments that we received from the public. And it occurs to me that Parks and Rec is really the fundamental department in any municipal corporation or any city that has the ability to have parks. The, I mean, it's fundamental, almost like a backbone of what we do as a city. And certainly without wanting to disparage the successful bidder on this project, so much of what I'm concerned about, and it was echoed by members of the public, they want to see the monies go for tangible items and not just planning for the most part. And I always look at what the deliverables will be on something like this. There is a place for professional consulting and when that's necessary, but it, I guess I'm really disappointed to think that the kind of information that we'd be looking to obtain, that should be pretty much just all historical data up to today that we have within Park and Rec Department. And I understand, you know, we have some turnover and we get new people in as well, so there may not be the institutional knowledge, but certainly on an ongoing basis, that type of record-keeping and that kind of tracing and tracking with all these different locations that we have of our 50-plus parks in the city, that should be really built-up historical knowledge that's just readily available. And I understand where a consultant would come in and want that data, but that data should be very readily obtainable and only a few recent trends would need to be adjusted from that. I don't know if very many of you are familiar with, at least when it comes to urban planning, the idea of, of top-down master plans versus organic development. Jane Jacobs was the big proponent of organic development and talked about how it's so much more sustainable, so much more interesting, something that allows various aspects to develop as growth occurs, and it really customizes these to their areas. That more or less is the way that we've been doing parks. We recently have identified another area for a park, the former tree farm. We did the, well, Pearl Park as well, as was mentioned by Councilmember Silva. And just like the roads, almost again with our street problem, even if we had the money today, you can't really fix all the roads at once, no matter what kind of planning you have. We can only tolerate upgrading certain areas and moving around in the city up to the point where, where we have general improvement. And I think the parks are that way as well. And there were also comments about maintenance, necessary maintenance and basic issues, watering and maintaining the vegetation as well. I, I just think that our issues are at a much more basic level right now. I've also seen master plans developed to the nth degree, and then over the years, they're routinely ignored, modified, changed, and partly to adapt to that same kind of organic development principle that goes on. I, I believe it's really the superior way to go. And I'm also troubled by the fact that our advisory committee, handpicked by us on the council, unanimously opposed this, but then it's still being plated up for us tonight. And I think considering, considering all of that, there's almost nothing to do except, say, back to the drawing board on something like this. I, I could also echo what some of the council members have said here as well, but the, and I, I do want to say one more thing too, Councilmember Silva, I'm not trying to pick on you, but you talk about the south side being part poor, and I agree. I live on the south side, and I've argued many times about park dwelling fees needing to be allocated geographically a little bit more within the city. But we've used a great deal of park dwelling fees to purchase and acquire property in Coyote Hills, the West Coyote Hills area, which is very much north in the city, and to the detriment of our ability to generate new parks in areas where they're really needed. And yet that remains closed because we've blocked any possibility of developing trails and opening that up for general public use. So I, I'd like to see a little more consistency out of our councils as we go forward, and I think that's going to be necessary because to me, this is more a do-it-yourself project, and it should be, rather than hiring professionals from the outside. If we need an expert, we should hire that expert, bring them on staff, and have them produce the result here that we're looking for. And with that, if there are other comments, we can make time for that, sure.
Yeah, no, so just on Coyote Hills, I think we finally are in the process of opening that up after all litigation. So it wasn't you and I who brought that litigation back then.
But spending huge amounts of money to acquire property that was already being given to us basically in the development plan.
We got more property, but I mean, I never, I, as you recall, when I first got here, I wanted to open those trails. I was, so I've never stopped or been in the way, I don't think, of opening those trails. So, you know, that's just one thing. And it just, there was a comment about, you know, the, the manager bringing stuff before us. I, I would be disappointed if he didn't bring the final decision to us, whether we accept the commission's recommendation or not. I think that's our prerogative. So I know there was a comment that he brought the INRAC report about the, the roads, and he brought it to us, and we, the council, rejected the recommendation and picked a new one. So I'm just saying that it, that the city manager would bring it to us, and I think we're the final, as we should be, the final decision makers on do we accept a recommendation or do we go against it? Do we spend money or not? Just want to make that clear. And then as far as these fees, these park dwelling fees, I, I just want to make sure that people understand that these fees cannot be used to program, to hire people, to do a basketball league. So these fees, yes, they will go to improve parks and purchase land, which is fine, but there's a misconception that we can use these funds for other things, for personnel and that, and hire people. So I just want to make that clear that we can't do that with these. Thank you.
Yeah, it's absolutely without prejudice in terms of the city manager's ability to bring something before the council, because I think this is where it needs to be decided. I've, I have no animosity about that whatsoever. However, I think he understands he's going against a certain amount of current or grain here, and I, I would hope he wouldn't take it personally if the council lands somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm sure he.
I mean, I had the opportunity, when this agenda was formulated, to say, gee, I don't want that there. But obviously it's here because I think it is worthy for all of us to discuss. I think there's a lot of value to be obtained there. But we have, if there's, oh, Councilmember Zara?
One more comment. I know we, we keep throwing everything at our, our staff, and I just want to say something that our staff are overstretched. We, we, we don't want to hire more people, we don't want to give raises, we don't give, I mean, but we want to just overload them with all this work. And if you notice our city, very little gets done. And the reason is because we keep doing the same thing over and over and over and over again. We, we lay off people, we don't want to hire people, we will, we lose people because we don't pay enough, all the expertise, and we are forced to outsource some of this work because we just are not paying enough, and this is what we have to work with. But without proper planning, nothing is going to get done. So I, it's this very 14, 14, you're going to throw this at 14 full-time staffers? 14 people doing 53 parks, community centers, programming, events, all of that? And then give them this to do?
Are you questioning me on this because?
I'm questioning the whole, this whole debate.
Let me just refresh you again. I just said that I far prefer organic development over a top-down master plan.
But it hasn't worked, Mr. Mayor. It hasn't worked. Our, our, our parks are a mess.
Hold on a second. Don't rewrite history, sir. The parks are a mess over Hold on a second. Don't rewrite history, sir. The parks are a mess over decades of neglect, when the staff was fully funded and allocated. So let's not make this like this happened yesterday.
No need to shout.
Okay. So with that, I think, as long as everyone's had their say, we will entertain the substitute motion first.
Correct, which is one to approve the staff recommendation, including the arts component. And that's okay, I'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember Jung?
No.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Zara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap?
No.
And Mayor Whitaker?
No.
So that motion fails two to three. And that would put us to the original motion, which is to reject the item. And if you're ready, I'll do the roll call vote on that one.
Please.
Okay. Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Nay.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
And that one passes three to two.
And fortunately, now we move to item number 15, another park-related issue, Union Pacific Park Improvements Update: Renewable Farms Project. That one would be presented by Mr. Folks.
Thank you, Mayor Whitaker, members of the City Council. This is a receive-and-file action that was requested to be brought forward this evening, just to provide an update on our efforts at Union Pacific Park and our work with Renewable Farms, which is a nonprofit organization that does aquaponic farming. They have locations in the city of Anaheim, and they are getting ready to open a location in Eliso Viejo that does a similar type of effort that they would be proposing here. Our work over the last year has admittedly been slowed a little bit by COVID, both on our side as well as the Renewable Farms operator side, in terms of developing more finalized plans, as well as seeking construction funding to kind of build out the site. We are interested in continuing those discussions and negotiations with Renewable Farms. We think they will be a fantastic operator for this location and the services that they'll provide to the community, both as a park facility, as well as the training and occupational programs, schools, as well as the food that they grow, they give away to charities, folks that are experiencing homelessness, et cetera. So they are incorporated into our specific plan, which is a 35-acre area that encompasses not only the park, but all the property south of the railroad tracks, west of Harbor. Trusslow makes the southern border, and then it jogs down to Valencia at Richmond. This rail district, or railway-specific plan, is currently underway, and it was through a draft, excuse me, a grant that we received from SCAG back in 2019, 2020. We have a draft of that specific plan, administrative draft being reviewed by staff currently. And we'll be bringing forward a draft of that plan for consideration by the Planning Commission and City Council later this summer. And we'll be following by the environmental analysis in order to make that plan fully implementable. The UP Park is incorporated into that specific plan and is operating on a separate track. The, the current ENA, Exclusive Negotiating Agreement with Renewable Farms, is set to expire on May 4. And so we will be bringing back an item on the April 20 City Council meeting recommending an extension of that exclusive negotiating agreement. Again, we think they're the right operator for this location. We just need a little bit more time in order to get all of the components in place to make it ultimately a successful project. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Thank you for the report and the update. Any comments?
I have a question. When the ENA was issued, how many, like, multiple bids or how many proposals were considered?
So this, this initial ENA was actually done by the Parks and Recreation Department. So I don't have that information at hand. But I believe this was, this was a group that we had sought out specifically to enter into negotiations with. So I don't believe there was any other groups considered. But again, this was not coming directly from my department at that time.
Understood. So essentially, Parks and Rec sought them out, brought them in, signed an ENA, and then roughly, we're about a year and a half later now, and, you know, kind of still working on things.
Right. So we have a conceptual site plan. They have an architect on board. We are adopting the specific plan, which incorporates them. But again, we've, their progress has been slowed in terms of gathering grant funding for the actual construction. And our, our process in terms of adopting the specific plan was initially delayed because the grant from SCAG was delayed as well.
The specific plan you're referring to, is that from the housing plan or the housing element that was?
It is. It's one of the components that was addressed in the housing element study session a couple back in March.
Okay. Is that, that would be the rail plan?
The rail, yeah.
Okay. Now, I'm just curious, because we had talked about that. And I think one of the items that I had at least proposed was that we remove that from that plan. Because I think there were bigger plans for that neighborhood than just, you know, the high-density housing that was proposed in sort of the, you know, the, within the, you know, within the plan that was part of what had become the city's rail plan. So it was my understanding we had pulled that part out to, you know, look at that separately.
Every one of the items that was mentioned at the study session is going to be considered separately. So there, there is, there is no uniform adoption of everything that was mentioned at the study session. And so there are going to be opportunities for both the commission and the council and the public to comment on the specific plan as a separate item.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'll wait for public comments.
Okay.
We would request public comments at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak to this item, please come forward.
Good evening, once again, City Council members and mayor. I would like to discuss this topic. I did mention that this park has, is in my neighborhood. It's actually across the street from my property. I have lived in the city of Fullerton all of my life. Have paid my taxes, my family, my children, we all have. I love this community. I love our city. This park has been closed for 23 years. It started with the fact that in 1998, it was found to be hazardous material in the park. It was all removed. We live there. I lived there with my children during the time the toxics, toxins were removed. We have waited for many, many years. My children, my oldest is now 36 years old. We got a chance to use the park twice in their lifetime. And now, we're hoping that this urban community, this Renewable Farms, sounds like a wonderful plan and a wonderful idea. And we really look forward to it. We have some slight concerns, but I'm sure they can be fixed as we go down along the road. Maybe, you know, some of the cars that speed through the town, maybe a roundabout, that'll help with that. Not having to call our police department every time someone's speeding, or maybe somebody gets hit, maybe something like that, or speed bumps, something for a solution, something like that. We do like the city, the fencing around the park. It helps to separate the neighborhood between the homes and the park. And we'll keep our business to our side and their business to theirs. And then we can share the community together. I also, I'm very happy about this plan. I, we have waited during COVID, and I know that there was some issues that prevented it from happening right away. But we're waiting patiently. I mean, what's another year, considering 23? And I just wanted to thank you all. I hear the way that you're communicating and your decisions, and you have different ideas. And that's the way a city should be working. That's how ideas should be brought together, and listening to us, and us listening to you, and what's best for our community. Because we have been neglected. I will tell you, I have been here longer than a lot of you. And our South Side of our city of Fullerton has been neglected. And I have paid just as much as anybody else. And I have children that work here, that provide for your children. So I just wanted to, to say, let's just work together. And, and I hope this is a successful plan. Thank you.
I must tell you, your comment about 1998 being 23 years ago, that just is a little bit shocking when I think about that. I remember 1998 very clearly. But thank you for your comments. Appreciate that.
Hi. I was interested in the idea of the Santa Fe Park to be something that would be more orientated towards, something that would benefit the community at large. And I was thinking, a skateboard park is something that's in the middle of every city, and that something not only teenagers could benefit from, but younger folks. And I saw a really neat park that's a lot like this. The land, it's a long strip of land down on the east side of Lake Elsinore. It's a beautiful park with, they've got two different dog parks. Then they've got a skateboard park for tiny tots. It's like little, little hills. They ride their bikes and skateboards over. There's a basketball, little, two basketball courts in the middle. And there's another skateboard park that's a little bit more advanced. And these are all like, they're not super advanced skateboard parks. Like, we have one, I feel like it's a little bit outdated out there at Independence Park. It's, it's mainly just for advanced tricks. And they also have a, a whole section right next to that area for mobile homes, campers, storage containers. And it fits right in. It doesn't, it doesn't look out of place at all. So that accommodates a lot of low, low-income people. So I would think, I don't, I'm not sure what this farming operation is, but I think maybe something like community garden or farming would be more, a better spot for that would be up there in Coyote Hills, like that piece of land off of, that Fullerton owns off of Rosecrans. I could see they've already planted like little trees and things around there. That's a large, open space in a recreation area. That would be, would be a nice place for the community to do something more like that. And, but having a skateboard park at Santa Fe Park, a friendly one, would take a lot of the skateboarders out of the parking structure across the street from Fullerton High School. So I think there's a great need for having something in our city center that will accommodate the most people in the, near the downtown in a, in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Good evening, Council Jose Trinidad-Casaguetta. I actually had the opportunity to help build the aquaponic farm, the Renewable Farms site in Anaheim way back when. So I know this is going to be a really much-needed improvement at the site. I do want to add that the business model for Renewable Farms is more on the event center part. So just to keep an eye on making sure the fees for renting the event space are, you know, they're just conducive. They match what Fullerton residents want and need, and it's not going to be too pricey or not too, too cheap, because they do have the right to, you know, make sure they're paying off the investments and those improvements there. And another thing for, a question for Mr. Mayor, I'm, like, normally I wouldn't speak about this because it's not really, you know, a matter that the council is supposed to be talking about. But is there a council dais policy on Councilmember Decorum? Because all through tonight, I'm just like, I'm even afraid to say it. Councilmember Ahmad Zara has been making really dirty faces beneath his mask at the public for most items, in my opinion. I've seen it on the Zoom.
I'm sorry, I have not been doing that. So please don't accuse me for anything.
Well, I, I said in my opinion, and that's how I feel. And I usually don't even want to talk about this stuff because of that. But I've just been feeling very uncomfortable because this has been going on for multiple items. And, you know, normally, I agree with him on a lot of policy issues. But like, Decorum-wise, is there something that can be underlined on here? Because I'm like shaking, just from him having interrupted my public comment, just to make my opinions heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Zoomers out there?
As opposed to Zoomies, which is what dogs get, right? Do we have any Zoom comments?
Yes, we have two. Caller ending in 860, please unmute.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Tony Bushala. I want to share, share with you some thoughts on the so-called Union Pacific Park, as well as the abandoned UP Rightaway. I believe I can offer some insights that will help your decision-making about this property. First, it's necessary to put these parcels into a larger context, a concept that I created called the Fullerton Rail District. In this area, several plans are now moving forward without any oversight by you, the elected policymakers, but rather by your staff, funded by SCAG grants. There is even a draft specific plan for this area that has already been created, but not shared with you or the public. This unaccountability and lack of transparency must stop now. No one outside City Hall ever wanted a park of any kind on the UP site. Furthermore, the proposed idea to operate an aquaponic facility on this property is not even a park use. The facility would be operated by a private individual with restricted entry. The land would also become a profit center presumably for both the city and the operator, rather than a public park. You should let the ENA, ENA for this site expire without any embarrassing extensions. You should also sell this 1.7 acres in conjunction with a development agreement for the specific plan area. If necessary, the 2022 primary election can be used to facilitate this. This property is worth several million dollars. Next, the use of the UP Rightaway for a recreational trail is a boondoggle in the making. This strip has no connectivity. No one is or will be interested in strolling from Independence Park to the Poison Park site. It would require pedestrian crossings at Highland and Richmond. It would become a dead alley and an attractive nuisance. On the other hand, as we have pointed out in the true Fullerton Rail District concept, it would be extremely useful as a multipurpose street that could be built by a developer under a lease dedication and development agreement. This would improve, not inhibit traffic. And this is sound planning. I urge you to make the UP Rightaway an asset rather than a liability in creating a vibrant Fullerton Rail District plan, driven by economic reality and creativity, instead of bureaucracy that's driven by, and dictated and pushed along by SCAG grants. For the first time in a long time, Fullerton has a chance to be governed by elected policymakers instead of bureaucrats and unseen agencies pursuing their own agendas. It's time for you, City Council, to exercise the authority vested in you by the voters of Fullerton. To conclude, I urge you to stop this SCAG Pacific Plan, a creation of which you are either under-informed or not informed at all. Start again, guided not by what SCAG wants, but by what you think will be best for Fullerton. Please do not receive and file.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have one more caller, do we?
Carrie J., please unmute.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, have, having never, ever spoken in open form, like, by myself doing it twice, I mean, I guess it's because this relates to me personally. Whatever we choose to do with Union Pacific Park, I just hope it is sustainable. Right now, it is, I didn't know it had been around for 23 years as an unused parcel. But please, I'm very encouraged by the discussions that you've been having. Sounds like we have a very well-informed and council members and people who truly want to do what's best for Fullerton. So whatever your decision is, please just make it sustainable. And, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
There are no other callers.
With that, we'll bring the item back to council and open for any discussion or questions. Yes. Yes, sir.
I'd ask staff to bring this item to the council meeting tonight. Some historical inaccuracies in the staff report need to be pointed out. One, the city did not purchase the property in question from Union Pacific Railroad. The redevelopment agency purchased the property. Secondly, the soil contamination was not from a prior railroad operation, but from the gas company. And for the life of me, I can't figure out how a sustainable urban farm is a great, while, you know, great in concept. It's not a park. And, you know, the city sent out a draft release at the, draft lease at the end of February. Where is the draft leased in the staff report? Who authorized the draft lease? Why did it not come before the council, Planning Commission, Parks Commission, any commission for that matter beforehand? Why are so many things done that are not forthcoming? Why is council constantly kept in the dark regarding multimillion-dollar land use parcels and their use? With regards to Renewable Farms, St. Jude gave this project a $15,000 grant. At this point, is unwilling to give any more funding, has nothing measurable, if anything, has been done at all. Renewable Farms operates in Anaheim, is about to open a location in Eliso Viejo. There's no plan in place for Fullerton, as far as I can tell. The only thing that's been completed so far is the hiring of yet another consultant. So perhaps a small nonprofit like Renewable Farms is, this is more than they can chew, and we are expecting too much of them to be able to operate these three locations by adding Fullerton on as well. At this point, with Renewable Farms making no movement on this project would not warrant continuing this ENA. And I know that's coming before the council on April 20th, so I'll reserve my commentary till then. And while this is a receive and file item per staff, I would move that, that it not be renewed. We move on with putting out an RFP on the property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, this is, park has been closed. And I do recall when I was running for council the first time, I spoke to all the neighbors in front of that. And they, they were very adamant about now wanting a park, at least not a park with bathrooms, because they have had a lot of issues with the bathrooms and people going in there and the drugs, the homeless and all that and situations. So they were very adamant about that. And, and it's been closed. And I think it's, we, we, the city finally got control of it because it was redevelopment and we, it was taken over by the finance department. And we got it back maybe four or five years ago, I think, or, I mean, it wasn't, but anyway, but, so it, it was sitting there until we could get it back from the state and then figure out what to do with it. And that's when, I think, 17 or 18, this idea came forward. And, yeah, we, we didn't send out any RFP, formal RFP. But having been to the Renewable Farms in Anaheim and having seen what they've done there, and being familiar that all their produce that they produce there goes out to the public, they have occupational training for veterans. I know one of the veterans that did live in Fullerton was going to work, was working at the Anaheim one and was going to work here at the Fullerton one. And they do a great job with the veterans, bringing them in and teaching them how to occupation, this type of occupation. I know they've gotten the schools involved with field trips and teaching the kids about farming and aquaponics and so forth. And so we did, well, I was part of the, not sure, I'm not sure if Mr. Zara or Mayor, you were part of the, of the vote to give them that ENA. But, yeah, that, that is coming due, and it will be, you know, coming due. I like to see what they have. I, I think this area could be a good development for that community. And, and you're right, Mr. Jung, that it should include a park because it is. And one of the ideas that we discussed early on was to have a sort of a totlot park there where the residents could go, or a sit-down park that would be closed during the evenings. Because that was part of the problem, that in the evenings, that's when you get this activity that, the savory, the un, you know, the bad activity. So with this development, being gated and being open and closed and having events, that would be a benefit to the downtown area. It would be a benefit to the, the occupation training that they do, to the district, the school district. Because we had, I don't know, back before I was in council, we had worked with the city and the school district to try and get a, a, a little bit of a, a farm, a potting plots to grow food and teach the kids about farming and growing their own vegetables. So that's going to, you know, I'm hoping that'll be incorporated in there. But, and again, yeah, they, they did slow down. And I think part of it was the pandemic. And so I would like to say, just, you know, let's hear what they have to say when they bring it in. If not, their ENA, you know, is up for renewable. But I think this could be a good situation there. You're not going to have the constant traffic that the neighborhood would want there. It would be on specific events. And having been to the Renewable Farm in Anaheim, they, their plan was to give away like 20% of the produce and sell the rest to make ends meet. Well, as it turns out, the events during the weekends and during the days pay for it. So it will be sustainable. And they end up giving away 90, 95% of the produce there to nonprofits, to the neighbors, the neighborhood where they can go. I know in Anaheim, they do offer some neighbors to come in, or they used to before pandemic, and pick the produce they needed and take it home for free. So that could be a benefit for the, the local community here. But I, I would like to see it go through, you know, again, an ENA doesn't mean they're going to do the project. It just gives them time to plan. And I think because of COVID, we should give them a little more time. And at the end of the day, if they come back and we still don't like the project, we can go ahead and reject it. So it's not, we're not saying this is going to be the final product. We're just saying, show us what you got. What can you do? And again, they're, they've got two, or they're soon to open the Eliso Viejo one. So I, I think for this area, I would like to see the, at least give them a chance to give us their full presentation on it. Again, without any commitment. And then at the end of the day, you know what? It's not what we need, or it is what we need. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Councilmember Zara.
Yeah, I know this is a receive and file and update, and I'm sure we'll have more discussions at the next meeting. But, you know, this is something that will benefit the community, the, the community wants. If we're going to, if we are listening to the community, this is what they need, as opposed to listening to some property owners and developers who have personal interests in any of this. I, I just think that, you know, there was mention that there's delays on this. Well, there was, you know, COVID happened, and that influenced also the timeline of this. So it's not to the fault of these, of this organization. So, and also, we lost a lot of our staff. This was at Parks and Rec. And we know where, what situation they're in right now. So I'd like Councilman Silva, I'd like to see us move forward with this before we completely reject it. So, and appreciate staff for giving us this update.
Mr. Mayor Protim, anything on this? My only comments on this would be that I agree with Councilmember Jung. To a large extent, this seems to have arrived in a fairly stealthy way. And I don't know whether any of that was intended or not, but I would like to see a bright light shined on something like this, on a proposal like this. ENAs that expire, but, but they never really expire. We just stretch them out. They, they become pretty much everlasting negotiating agreements when, when that occurs. I, I was also struck by the comment about this needs to be looked at in context. And you have a very potentially valuable piece of land here. And considering the value that's placed nowadays on transit-oriented development and some of the possibilities that surround that, it seems to me that to proceed with this, and, and I heard also from the residents who really want to see something happen at that site, and, and I understand that. But something more comprehensive, this would seem to me to be kind of an island on its own. A bit reminiscent to me of, of properties, urban renewal properties, or brownfields or something like that. And I'm, I'm just not sure if it's the right approach to really create the renewal in that plan in the larger area that we're looking at. So I will, since this is a receive and file item, I will withhold final judgment until we see that presentation. But I, I have some concerns, some fairly large concerns with this.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. It would obviously never be our intention to withhold information from you or the council. And so I, I think the presentation on the 20th will be enlightening in terms of what were the terms of the ENA, understanding what the council directed staff to do and directed the nonprofit to do during that ENA period might be helpful to provide that context that you were in fact looking for. And we can certainly provide a lot more information about our efforts on the specific plan to, again, put it into the greater context. So hopefully that will all help to round out the discussion for the 20th. And then ultimately, it will be up to this council to decide whether or not to extend the ENA or not.
And I appreciate that. And on the positive side, this is an example of that organic development that I was talking about, which is a more piecemeal approach and not some top-down master plan. So it does cut both directions, I believe.
And literally organic, right?
And with that, receive and file, no action required here.
Do we, do we need a motion to receive and file?
I'll move the item.
Chair's motion.
Right.
It's purely a receiving file.
Okay. Yeah. If, if that's okay, I'll just.
And I would just invite the council to go check out the Renewable Farms Anaheim. Now that we're opening up, it might be worth it.
Yeah, I think that's definite on that. Appreciate that.
So we'll receive and file by direction of the chair.
Yep. And item number 16, which is consideration of discontinuing 5% earnings reduction for Fullerton Management Association and confidential non-represented employees and authorization to reinstate funds contributed by city employees upon receipt of eligible funds.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Laura Giannetti Mercer, Human Resources Department. So we've got two matters here before you for your consideration. One is the discontinuation of the 5% earnings reduction agreed to by the Fullerton Management Association and members of the Confidential Non-Represented Group, as well as authorization to reinstate funds, eligible funds anticipated to be received under the American Rescue Plan Act. So. It's coming. It's coming. Okay.
And I, and I would, I didn't see this one in the presentation in the shared folder. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Laura, I might have let you down here, but I didn't, I didn't have that. This one wasn't shown, so.
I suspect we may not need a very sophisticated presentation on this.
We're good.
Okay. Well, I'll try to run through this pretty quickly then. Okay. So if we can go to the next slide, please. Quickly, by way of background, the Fullerton Management Association, 54 classifications, 38 filled. These are a mix of non-safety management and supervisory positions throughout the city. Confidential Non-Represented Group, 15 classifications, of which actually 13 are currently filled. This is a mix of general admin management employees in administration, administrative services, and human resources. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Oh, there it is. Sorry. Okay. So in April 2020, the city entered into discussions with all the different bargaining groups to address the COVID-19 and the budgetary impacts of COVID, and to try to find ways or alternatives for salary savings. Executive employees actually agreed to a 5% reduction in May of 2020, included the city manager and chief of police, actually city manager, took a seven and a half percent cut. They upped that to 10% in July of 2020. The Fullerton Management Association and the Confidential Non-Represented Group agreed to a 5% cut September of 2020. During the discussions with the group, it was discussed that should the city receive eligible funds, you know, due to, you know, COVID, to, to backfill lost revenues, that the city would consider giving back the employees the 5% earnings reduction, and to the extent possible, reinstating those funds that the employees had contributed or given back to the city. And then, again, through that, the Americans, the AARP, which was signed on March 11th, which it's anticipated that Fullerton is going to get about just under $35 million. So this chart just represents the time period for the earnings reductions. For the council executive-appointed group, the 5% earnings reduction ended on March 19th. The city manager has a discretion to adjust salaries for the executive group up to 10%. So therefore, their earnings reduction ended on March 19th. For the Confidential Non-Represented and the Fullerton Management Association does require council action to end that 5% reduction. So should council approve it this evening, that earnings reduction would end on April 16th, 2021. So this chart just reflects the contributions to date or anticipated, if we go through 416, for the Confidential Non-Represented Group and FMA, as well as the earnings, should again council approve to reinstate those monies. So for the council, for executive council-appointed, it's about $113,000 for the confidential group, $28,000. And for the Fullerton Management Association, $106,000. If those earnings are reinstated, we're looking at $100,000 for the executive council-appointed group, $28,000 for the confidential group, and $103,000 for the Fullerton Management Association. Employees who are on peril on the date of any reinstatement would be eligible for those monies, which explains the difference between the contributed amounts versus the reinstated amounts, because we have had some individuals who have left the organization since the implementation of the 5% reductions. Thereby, so the reinstatement amount is going to be less than what's been contributed. So staff recommends this evening that one, council adopt resolution approving the side letter agreement between the city and the Fullerton Management Association to cease the 5% earnings reduction. Secondly, to adopt a resolution relating to the compensation for the confidential non-represented employees, again, ending the 5% reduction. And third, upon receipt of federal funding available from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, authorize the city manager to implement full reinstatement of all funds contributed by the FMA Confidential Non-Represented Executive Council Appointed employees as a result of the implementation, implemented earnings reduction in response to city's budgetary challenges, primarily due to COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I see none from the council. So at this stage, I will ask for a public comment on this item.
Really smart about finances, but does this mean that all the back pay is reinstated or just the reinstatement of the, the fees at present?
Certainly, we can address that. Go ahead.
Twofold. There's, there's two, two actions. One is to end the reduction, the 5% reduction. And then secondly, if those, or if and when those monies are received, for council to consider giving back the money to the employees that have been contributed to date.
And do we have any Zoom comments on this item?
There are no Zoom comments.
Okay, we'll bring the item back to council. Yes, Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, recalling that time when we were trying to balance our, our budget, we did get support from the, some of the employee groups to help us balance our budgets. So, and we, we did make an agreement with them of this, this agreement. So with that said, I, I'd like to move the item and, you know, fulfill our end of the bargain. Thank you.
I'll second. Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The American Rescue Plan and the funding we received, there are, as far as I know, specific purposes that that money needs to be allocated and spent on. Public health emergency and the economic impact of the pandemic, support essential work, backfill reduction in revenue, and for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, as far as I can tell. Anaheim just borrowed $200 million to cover the deficit crater in their budget. This should be a cautionary tale to all of us on this dais, all of our residents, all of our stakeholders, and all of our staff. I would make a substitute motion to table this item until we've actually received. until we've actually received the monies allocated by the American Rescue Plan, which hasn't been done yet. And the only way out is through.
Okay, you know, this is a difficult matter, in my opinion, because on the one hand, there was at least a pledge to reinstate should that become available. And at least some of these funds appear to be available for that. But I think Councilmember Jung makes a good point. It would seem to me that to delay this item, at the very least, would not be a major issue. So I would, I would second your motion. Councilmember Jung?
It may be more beneficial, just from a procedural perspective, rather than table it, perhaps the motion could simply be to bring the matter back at such time as we have the funds. Otherwise, we have to go through a two-step process of untabling it and then making the action. So if you just direct us to come back when we have the funds.
Certainly, on advice of our city attorney.
I thought that too, but that's a date uncertain, right? At this stage.
It's okay, then that, open-ended that way. Well, I'll amend my substitute.
The funds come in and come back to you as a jet item, and you would have to do a two-step process.
That's fine. I'll amend my substituted motion to state that staff bring this back on the agenda when we receive the funds.
And I'll renew the second on that basis. Seeing no other comments or motions, I guess we're ready for a roll call.
Okay, voting on the substitute motion. Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
No.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap? And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Okay, that passes three to two. And by default, the original motion will fail.
And that concludes our agenda this evening. Not quite tomorrow morning at this stage. And so we will be adjourned until our next regularly scheduled.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
I'm sorry about the interruption, sir.
No, go ahead. Before we close, certainly.
Yes, before we close, I would like to agendize for the next April 20th meeting a performance review of the city manager. I'd make a motion for that. If I can get somebody, a second to agendize the item, I'd appreciate it.
I'll put it on the agenda, that's fine with me.
Close session, or I'll?
Close session.
Okay, and with that, we would be adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 20th.